Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the December 2nd, 2025 Post Falls City Council meeting. Clerk, please note that all council members are present with the exception of Mr. Malloy, who is excused tonight. Before we start, we'll announce there are two public hearings tonight, and I'm sure that's why most of you are here. If you care to, if you wish to speak, please fill out the form in the podium in the back, turn it into our clerk, and we will let you speak. There is a timer on the podium here, and we will ask you to watch that time. And if you, your time expires and you're just wrapping up, I'll ask you to finish up. Anytime we get a large crowd like this, there's going to be those people who are in favor and those people who are opposed. And it's important that we listen to everybody. And it's also important, and we're going to expect that everybody's going to treat everybody with respect. We're going to listen, you will be listened to, and I expect and hope that you will please listen to everybody else as well. No comments from the audience, we do need to have everything recorded and transcribed. So please, no comments from the audience. If you wish to speak, fill out the form and we'll happily let you talk. We do have one announcement. Don't miss Winterfest this Friday here at City Hall Plaza. The campus will be alive with holiday festivities for all ages, starting with Plaza Market at 4:00 P.M., featuring local artisans, seasonal treats, and unique gifts. The evening will include the lighting of the community Christmas tree, performances by the Pulse Falls Elementary School choirs, strolling carolers, crafts, treats from Mrs. Claus's kitchen, and a visit with Santa in his workshop. Bring your family and friends to celebrate the season. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
We have none tonight, sir.
Are there any conflicts of interest? Please present the consent calendar.
Item A is minutes from the November 18th, 2025 city council meeting. Item B is payables, November 19th through December 3rd, 2025. Item C is September cash and investments. Item D is acceptance of the canvassed election results. Item E is the linger annexation grants of right-of-way and easements, A N N X dash 24 dash 11. Item F is painted rock grant of rights-of-way and easements, A N N X dash 25 dash 3. Item G is the post-subdivision final plat approval. Item H is the Montrose 18th edition plat approval. Item I is G2 development annexation and zoning agreement, A N N X dash 25-2 and ZC 25-1. Item J is G2 development reasoned decision, A N N X dash 25 dash 2 and ZC dash 25 dash 1. Item K is Echo Estates Annexation Reasoned Decision, A N N X dash 24 dash 5. And item L is approval to purchase a replacement van for Parks and Recreation.
Any questions, let me say calendar.
I actually, I have a quick one, and I'm sorry I didn't email it, it just occurred to me. This van replacement, it's not part of the finances that we're talking about later in the public hearing, right? This is something different? Okay, awesome, thank you.
You're welcome.
I also have a question about the van.
Go ahead.
Just from a perspective of trying to save as much money as we can. So the van is, if I recall, my iPad isn't working quite right, so I don't have it right in front of me, but is a 2005 with just about 100,000 miles on it. The only issues that were mentioned were the air conditioning not being, not working. So to spend $70,000 on a brand-new van, it looks like we've been driving about 5,000 miles a year since we've had this one, seems a little bit excessive. So I would kind of like a little bit of explanation of that.
Ross, please. While you're approaching, wait, we've got a dead iPad up here, thank you.
Ross Junkin, Public Correspondent Manager and Fleet Manager as well. Yes, the van that you're asking about, it's 20 years old. It's quite a bit older than we typically hold on to a vehicle. And that 100, I think it's 105,000, if I recall right, on mileage. That's pretty much where we trip them, if we can do that. The, I want to make sure you finish it. The air conditioning has been giving that vehicle fits, so they have not used it. We tried to fix it last year, and it continues to fail. So rather than put more money into a vehicle that's 20-plus years and over 100,000 miles, it's ready for a replacement as it sits right now. The other piece to that puzzle is the fact that this replacement van is a high-roof van. So it, I'm not sure if any of the council members have taken a tour in one of those vans that are out there. They're very tight, they're very small. This is much more roomy and allows people to walk into the van. It's more like an airport shuttle.
Yeah.
Vehicle for multipurpose. It's not just rec, but it could be used for multi.
So with the, kind of the low miles per year on the old van, what is it, what is the van primarily used for?
It's assigned to recreation, and I can't speak exactly to all of their.
Dave, I'll let you answer that.
So I can't speak on the mechanical side of it, but I can speak on the van itself. First of all, when we bought it, it was a used van from N I C. So we use it for our outdoor programs, for the public activities. So we have two vans. It's also used for some of the camp activities if we're running, say, the, a small group, our CLTs or something like that. But for the most part, it goes anywhere from, you know, mom's day, day out to, up to the mountain for hiking, for anything that we can run an activity for. So we have tried to cut back in the summer because the public doesn't really like having the windows open on the freeway. But I can tell you, it was a used van that we bought from N I C.
Mr. Fair, would it be safe to say that the 5,000 miles a year on that vehicle, because of the condition that it's in, that this new van would probably have more than 5,000 miles a year put on it, it would probably be utilized a little bit more because of some of the features?
I would think so, and from what I understand, it's a little roomier. It has the ability to go a little further and be comfortable.
So an upgrade, okay, thank you.
Let's hope we get 20 years out of this one then.
Is the, the new van is high-roofed or the old van is high-roofed?
The new van would be a high roof.
The current van is not?
Correct.
So this would be like a totally different, like, we're not just replacing one for one, like a, what is it, like the 15-passenger van or something?
It would be a 15-passenger van replacement, yes. So capacity would be the same, it's just a higher roof. The other factor is that the new van will be four-wheel drive, where the old one is not. So it's a safety factor, especially this time of year.
Is this the van that has been used for the Friends of Post Falls days, or not days, but the Friends of the Community Forest?
I'm going to have to ask you a question. Is, is, are they using the red van or the white van?
White van.
They're using the white, that's our new one.
Oh, oh.
So the red one is one, we, we take equipment in and we do stuff. So that's part of it, is we're not getting 15 people in it. And sometimes you'll see this box on the back that's made out of wood on a hitch, so we have that. So from what I've been told, this one will handle more.
Oh, okay.
Will we be able to salvage the cassette player in that old van?
Okay. It's an eight, it's an eight-track.
Any other questions?
You feel comfortable with it, Nathan?
I do, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, guys. I would move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Stiglider?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Motion passes, Wade? Well, hang on, it may be all right, but he's got a old agenda, let's see if the new one comes up.
Okay, got it.
Okay, thanks. Who said you weren't technically? We're now at public hearings, and the first one is the North Place Right-of-Way Vacation. I did not get a copy of the letter, that was not dealing with this public hearing, is that correct?
Right, I don't think that it is.
Okay. So, North Place Right-of-Way Vacation without an open public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson and members of City Council. John Manley here, Planning Manager, presenting the staff report for the North Place Vacation, VAC 25-3. So the owner of this request is the Schneidmiller Brothers. Kevin Schneidmiller will be here, he is here tonight to speak on their behalf. They're requesting to vacate some right-of-way that I'll show you in a minute, that will help clear up the remaining portions of their development site. And they do own everything around this proposed vacation. And staff saw that there was no need for any utilities to be retained or anything that was in that. So you see here, here's the proposed right-of-a, right-of-way vacation. Here is the bounds of the North Place project, their phase project. This is an older image, they now have some additional phases they've worked on. Here's the approved plan that they have for this. You can see here that the proposed alignment of the roads is not near as linear as the, the right-of-way that was retained. So they're requesting to vacate that, that way when they go through their phases, they could then grant the right-of-way at the time of the phases to make these connections that you see here. There's the staff review, we didn't see a need to retain it. We'll get the right-of-way with future plating, no utility providers are affected. And the proposed, the current does not align with the approved preliminary plat. Here who, here's, this is who we've noticed. Comments we received was Phillips 66 you see here, they commented they had no utilities. N I T D, they had no comment. Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Manley?
This isn't land that we own, right? They own the land, we just have the, like, right to use it with this if we want to, if we needed to do something with it, like the roads.
Well, I mean, it's right-of-way, so technically that, those corridors, yeah, we have the right to use that.
Right.
So once we vacated, then how the vacation process goes is they vacate from center line out to the adjacent property, they own those adjacent properties, so by default, it then be retained to the adjacent owners, which is the Schneidmiller Brothers.
Okay, perfect. Sometimes I think it gets confusing that we get, we vacate land to someone that they don't pay us, but when we want to buy, like, just from, we don't buy rights-of-way, but sometimes we have to purchase small pieces of property or easements places. So then we're paying money, I think that sometimes just from the optics of watching one or two of these, it kind of gets confusing. So I just wanted to audibly clarify that to everyone, that this is not land that we actually own. We're just giving up our legal, like, easement or rights-of-way to it. And you're giving me a funny face, like you don't understand what I'm saying, and that's okay.
Typically, right-of-way is right-of-way that's its own, basically it's area reserved for city ownership and city use within the rights-of-way. Like a road, typically, like, along Prairie Avenue, when we widen it, oftentimes, we do have to buy right-of-way.
Right.
So it becomes, I mean, public rights-of-way.
But we will get the appropriate rights-of-way back when the actual streets for this development, which you showed on the other picture, are built in.
Yes, so when they go through here, they'll basically, through the plating process, dedicate, dedicate the rights-of-way that allows.
Yep, got it.
Any questions, Mr. Manley?
Sorry if I made that more confusing.
No, 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 like I said, sometimes it, the argument is like, oh, well, we have to purchase our rights-of-way or when they're dedicated, that's one of the reasons why we should do certain things, but why are we just giving away rights-of-way without getting any money back for the land? But we don't actually own this land, it's just a right-of-way, I'm just saying it out loud.
Generally, pretty resistant to being on board with vacating right-of-way.
Okay.
Because generally, you want to retain it as long as possible, you know, until it absolutely makes sense. And so this is one that staff did.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, can wish to speak? Name for the record, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Kevin Schneidmiller. I reside at 6552 East Octavia Court here in Post Falls. I'm representing both the applicant and the landowner tonight in this matter. I'll be very brief. Mr. Manley laid out the most important items, and I have a PowerPoint, but I don't really think it's necessary to bring it up. Again, this right-of-way was created through a plat back in 1910. So it's a very old plat, it was part of some irrigated tracks that were created at that time. As we came forward in 2024 with a subdivision plan, as you can tell by the map that Mr. Manley had up, that right-of-way didn't really fit the plan in any way because they're very linear, north and south, east and west. The north-south one came close to the Syringa Street alignment, but normally now we'll meander roads slightly. And the size of the right-of-way didn't match up with the current code standards for residential collectors of both which Penrose and Syringa are. So that's our reason for the request to vacate this. To answer the council person's question, the two residential collectors, Penrose, which is the east-west collector, and Syringa are approximately 13 acres. The area being requested for vacation is five acres. So the city will, just not including local residential streets, will be granted about two and a half times the amount of right-of-way. In addition to that, the right-of-way that will be created through the plan fits the master transportation plan much better and makes connections to both, eventually Greens Ferry, we don't own quite all the way to there, as well as Prairie as Syringa is built north. So we appreciate your consideration in this matter and hope you will approve the vacation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Schneidmiller? Okay, thank you. Anyone wishing to speak?
We have none.
Mr. Schneidmiller, you don't care to rebut then, correct? Want to give you the opportunity, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, how would you like that?
I would move to approve North Place Right-of-Way Vacation, VAC 25-3.
Second. Motion second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Plou?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Stiglider?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up is the McGuire Annexation, and without an open the public hearing. And before we start, we have received two pieces of correspondence that came in after the deadline. Counsel, would you want me to read them into record?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah. Can I borrow one? Thank you. Okay, we have one in favor and one opposed, and I will read them at the appropriate time.
Good evening, Mayor Jacobson and City Council. My name is Justin Sauter, and we have the McGuire Annexation tonight, file number A N N X dash 25 dash 4. The applicant is requesting the City Council to approve the request to annex approximately 18.11 acres with a medium-density R2 zoning into the city of Post Falls. When the project was originally submitted, it was on, well, it's on four separate parcels, it still is, and it had four separate property owners. It has now been consolidated to two property owners. So the two property owners are now Prestige E M LLC and Wild Horse Investments. So just wanted to make that clear on the owners, there's only two owners now. And you'll see that reflected in the annexation agreement. Here is the project site, it's on the southwest corner of Pole Line Avenue and McGuire, and it is just north of Yukon Avenue and the train tracks that are running diagonally through the site there. Here you can see the site is not currently within the city and therefore does not have a zoning designation. The properties to the north, south, and west are all within the county and contain single-family homes on large lots. And the applicant is requesting a zone designation of R2. The property to the east as well is also a single-family residential. You can see on the larger triangle piece there, that's R1. And the applicant is requesting R2, and you can see on the map that there's R2 further south on Midway Avenue, represented in this orange color, which my mouse is not showing up. And then there's also been two other recent annexations, the Lingar Annexation and the Painted Rock Annexation that have also happened right there around Midway, that are also both been R2. There are R1 subdivisions east of McGuire Road that are both north of the project site that are on the east side of McGuire. The site is currently used for single-family homes over the Rathston Prairie Aquifer. The water service here would be the East Green Acres Irrigation District, and the wastewater would be handled by the city. We have the capacity to provide service and the willingness to provide service at the requested density. And any existing septic systems would be abandoned, and they would be required to hook up to the city's water reclamation system. McGuire and Pole Line are both arterials, and Yukon is a local street. And additional rights-of-way and easements would need to be provided as part of the annexation and road widening at the time of development. Now we will get into the review criteria for a zone change. The first one, is the proposed zoning district consistent with the future land use map and focus area contained in the currently adopted Post Falls Comprehensive Plan? So the future land use designation of this property is transitional, which is designated for areas suitable for growth. The timing for growth is undetermined, but guidance can be found within the West Prairie focus area. And the assigned zone should be compatible with adjacent zones and uses and consistent with the guiding principles of the focus area. This site is adjacent to properties within the transitional land use designation to the north, south, and west, and then the low-density to the east, as mentioned previously. And there's also medium-density further to the south, you can see in the orange color on the image to the left. Also want to point out that the R2 zone is an implementing zone for the focus area. The West Prairie focus area states that mixed residential is envisioned between McGuire and Corbin Road with higher density near commercial corridors and arterials. Some areas within the focus area may warrant commercial use considerations if they are adjacent to arterial or collector roads, or where traffic volumes exceed 4,000 trips per day, or within a commercial activity node. As you can see, the project site is on the corner of two arterials and is also within a commercial node, which is represented by the green circle on the screen. A commercial activity node is intended to encourage commercial activities to occur at major transportation nodes to complement the overall community and create a focal point. So some of these areas would consist of, or could consist of a variety of retail, office, or other commercial. However, another consideration is that Pole Line Avenue does not currently have good east-to-west connectivity and therefore may impact a commercial node at this location. The proposed medium-density would be compatible with properties in the immediate vicinity that are utilized as single-family properties, because the R2 zone would also allow residential uses at varying densities. And the intent of the applicant is to develop the property as detached single-family homes, similar to the Montrose subdivision that is further south. Medium-density may also be consistent with properties along McGuire that are further south that have been annexed earlier this year. Moving on to the second review criteria, which states, is the proposed zoning district consistent with the goals and policies contained in the Comprehensive Plan? The annexation request is consistent with Goal 1, which seeks to grow and sustain a balanced, resilient economy for Post Falls, providing community prosperity and fiscal health. The R2 zone can deliver attainable housing choices in the form of cottage homes, tiny homes, twin homes, or typical single-family homes, which make up the majority of the desired housing market in Post Falls, and that is also what the applicant is intending to provide. There are several factors that maybe need to be considered when applying a new zone. We've already talked about the future land use and compatibility with surrounding land uses. So now we will talk about infrastructure. Sanitary sewer is located in McGuire Road and would discharge to the Montrose Lift Station. That station has the capacity for the requested zone and is in conformance with the city's water reclamation plan. For traffic, McGuire Road and Pole Line are both classified as arterial roadways and are currently configured as two-lane roads. Modeling with our current transportation master plan indicates that over 70% of their roadway capacity is available in the current configuration. However, to accommodate the projected traffic volume up to the year 2035, McGuire would be widened to a five-lane road, and Pole Line would be widened to a three-line configuration at the time of development. Also, at the time of development, would be full urban improvements with sidewalk, sewer, gutter, things like that. The annexation is also consistent with Goal 7 of the Comprehensive Plan, which seeks to plan for and establish types and quantities of land uses in Post Falls, supporting community needs and the city's long-term sustainability. The R2 land use designation may help with community needs and long-term sustainability by providing housing, which is also discussed in Policy 15 of the Comprehensive Plan. Annexation of the subject site with the zoning request would help provide land for future housing needs in a medium-density in an area that is projected to be incorporated into the city. And upon subdivision development, roadway and pedestrian improvements would be required and completed, allowing for continuity of roadways and help create further pedestrian connections through sidewalks and trails, which is encouraged by Policy 33. The third and final criteria is, does the proposed zoning district create a demonstrable adverse impact upon the delivery of services by any political subdivision providing services within the city? And there have been none identified at this time. Here's a list of all the agencies that were notified of the project. We received comments back from these five, most of them were neutral or would comment during the subdivision process. Two that I want to point out is the Post Falls Highway District. They had comments regarding the alignment of the intersection of Yukon and McGuire. And we have chatted with them and the applicant and decided that that will be discussed at the subdivision development. Also, the Yellowstone Pipeline, we received a comment from them saying that they have facilities in the area, but that they are not on the project site, and that's what is shown here. This orange line that is north of Pole Line is the Yellowstone Pipeline. There's also another pipeline that goes through the project site, and that belongs to the Northwest Pipeline. We reached out to them for comment and did not receive any comments back from them. But the city is aware, and the applicant is aware of the pipeline, and the subdivision will be designed accordingly. That concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions, should you have any?
Any questions of Justin?
I have a few. Just going back to your comment about the Highway District and Yukon, I know that there was their commentary in the packet, but I'm assuming that your, like, verbal conversations with them and the applicant are not reflected in the packet, can you let us know what those?
Only conversations by email.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they should be included in your, in your packet, yeah.
So, okay.
There was three total comments, they had one prior to Planning Commission, then we reached out to them prior to the meeting for a clarification on one of their comments. That was again, an email correspondence, and now one, they sent another comment prior to this meeting.
Okay, all right. And then you said 70% of the road is available for McGuire? Is that, like, traffic-wise, like, we're only at 30% of its expected? Or can you explain that comment to me, please?
I'm going to defer to Rob on this one.
Mr. Paulus, sorry, I always make you stand up.
Keep him awake.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. For the capacity on McGuire Road, currently the traffic volumes, depending where you're at on it in that area are between 3,000 to 4,500 vehicle trips per day. That road has a capacity of over 12,000 right now, so it's got about another 70% of its capacity available.
In what way does it have capacity, like, the type of road that it is, like, made out of?
Arterial roadway, and it has right now two lanes in the northbound direction, one lane in the southbound direction.
For part of the roadway?
Correct.
Not, is it right here that it has three lanes, or is it a different part of the roadway?
Right now, we have the two lanes northbound up to the railroad tracks, and then that happens again north of Pole Line Avenue. Right now, we have the two lanes northbound up to the railroad tracks, and then that happens again north of Pole Line Avenue.
So in this area, it's not three lanes?
So in this area, we don't have all that now, but when that develops, you will then have additional road width that would be constructed from Pole Line Avenue down through the railroad tracks.
Can I ask you about the arterial designation as well, since you're up here? It, we've decide, we've decided this is an arterial because of what we want it to be like in the transportation master plan, or because of its actual usage presently?
In the current transportation master plan, based upon the usage and the long-term desire that we had in 2017, it was to see Maguire Road as an arterial roadway.
But if it's only using thirty percent of its capacity of a designated arterial, perhaps presently it is not actually an arterial roadway?
So we established it as an arterial because we saw that within the development period of the transportation master plan. That by 2035, we would be well within that three-lane arterial capacity, which is eight thousand to twenty thousand vehicles per day.
Okay, so that would depend on it being developed out, would bring it to its full blossom as an arterial roadway, but presently perhaps is not functioning as an arterial roadway?
If you want to go from a definition of identifying it classified based upon how many vehicles are on it, it's operating more as a collector right now, yes.
And then how about Pole Line that doesn't go really any far, any further west, or it kind of like goes into the subdivision there? It says that it's identified as a arterial as well, I drive on Pole Line all the time, but not this Pole Line, so is this one an arterial?
Based upon traffic volumes today, there are less than 500 vehicle trips per day on the section of Pole Line Avenue west of Maguire, which would be well within the local residential standard.
Gotcha.
By 2035, we anticipate with improvements on Pleasant View and improvements on Pole Line as we continue to grow. That Pole Line Avenue will need to be an arterial roadway.
This part of Pole Line?
From Maguire Road to Pleasant View, yes.
Okay, so going, so we would start the arterial there and move it west?
Correct.
So between?
And we're looking at alternatives with the transportation master plan. Update, which hasn't been adopted, and we're going to be having a workshop with you in the near future.
Okay.
As to what's going on with Pole Line between Maguire and Chase.
Gotcha, okay, I mean, I like it as a commercial node, but the arterial designation's just, I just had some questions about it, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thanks, Rob. Thanks, Justin. Does the applicant wish to speak? Name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. There we go. My name is Ray Kimball, I reside at 2104 Calamine Court here in Post Falls. I'm here tonight representing the two owners of the properties in question. So I think staff did a really good job of kind of talking through a lot of the zoning stuff, I'm gonna talk a lot tonight about why why the city should annex this, so this is, of course, the project site. And as you see here, it is transitional on the future land use map. Current, the proposed R2 annexation, what we're asking for tonight is annexation with an R2 designation with a single-family detached residential restriction. Which puts it more in the low-density residential zone, or category, where we're in that under five units per acre. Versus that medium-density. But what it does is it gives us the ability to create some lots that are a little narrower, a little smaller, to fit the entry-level market as best we can. Which is something that we're striving very hard to, to fill, because that's a part of the market that is really, really suffering at this point. This is what the, our proposed future subdivision looks like. And it's got some interesting things. One of the things that we talked about with regards to the wow, this is really weird, the slideshow doesn't show the mouse the same. So Yukon right now comes out and pops onto Maguire right at the railroad tracks, parallel to the railroad tracks at a weird little skew. Which is not necessarily a safe intersection. And so, one of the things that we will do with this layout, and the city staff suggested it, and it makes a lot of sense. Is that we're gonna take Yukon and we're gonna turn it, move it north, and then pop out onto Maguire about halfway up. And what that does, that provides an intersection that is perpendicular and far enough away from the railroad tracks. That it becomes a safe intersection, much safer than what's there today. Another thing that the follow-on subdivision will do, of course, will be, will bring pedestrian connectivity to that area. As you saw earlier in your present, or in your packet tonight, Montrose 15th or 18th or 25th or whatever it was, there's a lot of them. That completed the subdivision, Montrose, all the way up to the railroad tracks, so there's pathway all the way up to the railroad tracks here. There will be pathway from Pole Line all the way south to the railroad tracks here, so even though it is a little bit of a frogger hop across the, across the road, there will be pedestrian connectivity from, from essentially well north, almost, shoot, almost Prairie Avenue, no, Fisher, from Fisher. All the way down with a couple little gaps here and there. All the way down to Southeast Way. So recognizing that they'll have to hop across the road a couple times at different locations. But it's much better than walking down the shoulder of that road right now. So with regards to the Comprehensive Plan. So, so are we, the West Prairie Focus Area, key policies in that, we're, are we, talk about promoting some infill development, prioritizing annexation opportunities and supporting development patterns that are interconnected and provide pedestrian connectivity, which is what I was just speaking about. With regards to infill, I'll talk about that a little bit more later. But this is what the county zoning in the area looks like. You can see that the area that is not shaded in any color is the city of Post Falls. And so while this is not a, it is not an island per se, it is about a, this area is about a surrounded as you get. And I think and so when it comes to, is it infill, well, we've had a lot of places like this in the city that were at once little peninsulas and now they are pockets, and now they're, and then, and then those pockets are, have filled in. So with regards to the criteria in the Comprehensive Plan. We speak a lot towards, you know, future land use, being compatible, future land uses, or compatible with existing land uses in the area within the city. And of course, Montrose subdivision is single-family residential detached, which is almost identical to the product that we would like to bring online, a little bit smaller lots because they're in a PUD. They're R1, will be R2, single-family detached, that's what we're shooting for. Future any traffic, I'll talk about that a little bit later. But making sure that we have available and adequate land for future housing needs is really important, that's Policy 15. Because we gotta have a, we have to provide housing, you know, it's interesting, one of my clients is, his dad, or his uncle, once said, and he's eighty, or eighty-two, something like that, he said, if I want my kids and my grandkids to live here, I need twenty-seven homes. I need, we need to build twenty-seven homes. And that really struck me, that if we want our children and our grandchildren, our, the next generations to continue to live here. It isn't just growth from outside, it's growth from people who grow up here and don't want to leave. And it's important that we provide housing for them. So as you can see here, infill development. We are, our property is in the yellow, right here. And that, this right here is the only little gap keeping it from being a complete island all the way around. And as you see, there are other islands, there's this one here, which is mostly greenfield. And then there's this, which we call the Central Island, and I'll speak to that here in just a moment. So Central Island. So of the 200-plus properties in the Central Island, there are nineteen that are of a size that are easily developable. One of those just came into the city, that one right there, G2 Development. And there are three more that clients of mine have snapped up, now most of these, this is, it's an interesting area. Because most of these properties, they're, they're not on the market, if they're ever on the market, they're not on the market for more than a day or two before they're under contract. And so the ones that are developable get snapped up very quickly, but in order for them to be developable, they had to be one for sale. And two, touching the city, so it can actually annex into the city. And so, these are very few and far in between, and, and they can be, they're little troubles. They're hard to find, but they're worth a lot when you find one. And then, in this area, which is the West Prairie, is of those properties between Corbin and Maguire, south of Pole Line. Are fifty-five properties in there, and only five of those would be difficult ones to develop. So it really shows that, you know, while the focus on the Central Island is important, and we should snap up as much of those as we can. The availability is really, really small. So, in speaking about transportation master plan, I've got six minutes left, so I'll keep this pretty quick. So Rob is right. The transportation master plan shows this property along Maguire here as, Maguire is, as a, an arterial. And recognizing that Maguire at some point is not going to connect to Highway 53, it'll be cut off. It's also important to remember that Maguire is the western terminus of Hayden Avenue, which is also a regional collector, or a regional arterial. Prairie Avenue is a regional arterial. And so, having these north-south connections is incredibly important to our transportation master plan. And the way the transportation master plan works is that the city's consultant does this really complex traffic model. And then does some projections of traffic modeling based on population growth. And they look at where people are gonna grow, where they're gonna, where people are driving, what the driving habits are gonna look like. And then they do their best guess at, alright, hey, we're gonna plan for this, and this needs to be a certain width. And I don't think Rob's ever gotten a phone call from someone who said, thanks, I didn't have a traffic jam today. But they get phone calls all the time complaining about bad traffic. And one of the reasons for doing, for these annexations, why they're so important, especially along arterials. Is that the city gets the, the right-of-way and the construct, and the follow-on construction of the improvements with the subdivision, they get all that for free. So the city, taxpayer doesn't pay for that. So if the city in ten or fifteen, the city doesn't annex it, it just stays in the county, does what it does today. And in 2035, when the transportation master plan shows, well, when the transportation master plan comes to fruition and there's more traffic than the existing roads can handle. Then there are phone calls being made like, oh, this sucks, the traffic's horrible. And then it's on the public to, the public agency, whether it's Post Falls Highway District or City of Post Falls, or a combination thereof. To pay for those improvements. In this case, the frontage improvements, including the, the right-of-way dedication, not including the easement dedication. In today's cost is 671,000 and change. That's, that would be the savings to the public. And twenty-three-five dollars, it's over eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And that's an important thing to remember. And so, and then I guess the last thing really is that annexation criteria-wise, there were no adverse impacts identified by any agency as a result of that, and with three minutes left, I'll answer any questions or concerns.
Questions, Mr. Kimball?
Why isn't it one owner? Usually you come with one owner?
That's a really good question, so we were, when we were here last, or when the, so I guess it was the north, so, alright, there are two things. So there was an annexation subdivision request for the southwest corner of the properties, or the intersection, so it would have been... So, this right here was, came in and, or requested, and council denied it. And one of the reasons for denial was, there was talk about, it was not a cohesive annexation request, so it took a lot of work for my clients to, one, come together. To purchase four different properties. And come together as a single annexation rather than a hodgepodge. Believe I heard the term, jack-o'-lantern teeth. So try not to do that, to try to come together with a single cohesive annexation. I probably should speak to the, the commercial node and why that's not appropriate in this location. One is the east-west. So, the area right over here where it, this R1 parcel right here, that's the location of the existing, that's where the Schimmler Farm shop is. So, there, they've got North Place East and Montrose that they're slowly chewing through, or not very slowly. And that's all they're farming right now. So there will be a point in time in the future where they are done farming. And that property will end up getting developed. That is the appropriate location for commercial, and the reason for that is, is because it's on the going-home side of the street. So when it comes to commercial development, especially in outlying areas where there's a commercial node. It's really important for the commercial development to happen. The, alright, the tenants for commercial development like to be on the going-home side. Gym, going home from work, stop at the gym, convenience store, same thing, little grocery mart. Haircuts, all that stuff on the going-home side, so, and what I mean by that is hanging a right-hand turn instead of having to take a left-hand turn across traffic both directions. So that's why that would be the more appropriate spot for commercial on the going-to-work side. Say a coffee stand in the morning, the more appropriate spot would be the northwest corner, where it's a right-hand turn in, and then a right-hand turn out to get down to the freeway and out. So that was a long-winded answer, and...
Okay, sure. I mean, I guess we could argue about where the commercial should go or shouldn't go, I, it doesn't seem like it's mattered much in other places of the city where they put the commercial, but I am curious, in the packet and in the minutes. It talked about, well, I guess I'll start with, this development will have an HOA of some kind?
Generally, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So twenty-seven people from one person need houses, they're young people, presumably of the house-buying generation now. And I think it was also noted that, you know, we want these houses to be affordable for homeowners, so to meet that. If you're, you're laying that out as a reason to annex and to get an R2 zone. My question then is, is somewhere in your like deed agreement or development agreement, will it state that only people of a certain age or generation can buy these homes, and also will they be owner-occupied, because otherwise they tend to be in a price point that they could easily be rentals as well? So if, if that's laid out as a statement as why we do need those, I'm curious if, if it can be backed up with making sure that that's what they would be for?
I think that's always the intent, that's the intent. There's ways to accomplish that. There are some tricky legal things there that I'm not probably experienced enough to really navigate, that's what the attorneys are for. When it comes to when it comes to a development, for instance, and I'll, so this property right here. When it had an R1 designation, it had sixteen lots. An R2 is twenty-two lots, same streets. Same amount of infrastructure, same length of streets, same everything. But there's more lots, and so the cost of those And so the cost of the overall project for both of them is essentially the same, but it's divided amongst more lots. And so by doing that, it brings the lot price down. And in bringing the lot price down, it correspondingly brings the home price down. And market conditions being what they are, it's, we're doing our best to hit that market of entry-level homes. When it comes to owner-occupied or rental, I know that when I retire, I would love to rent my house as income. But I've lived there for twenty-four years now. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's a good or a bad thing, but I think it's important that we provide, I think someone once put it, said to me, it's important to get on the homeownership train. It doesn't matter if you get on an economy or business class or first class, but get on the train. Because as long as you're gaining equity, you have the ability throughout your lifetime generally to move into different homes and move up. And it's incredibly important, and that's what we're shooting for when it comes to ensuring that it's a owner-occupied or deed-restricted or age-restricted or any of that. I, I couldn't, I couldn't commit to anything like that.
Sure, and as you all know from being on planning and zoning, we only have so many criteria that we're technically allowed to consider. So if there are going to be comments made outside of those criteria that are placed there to help us be encouraged to see the vision of the, the project, I would just hope that there was assurance that that was something that would actually happen instead of them just being comments to help us see what you're trying to do. And that's really the only, that's mainly my, what I'm trying to get at here.
Okay.
So, yeah, thank you so much.
Do you have any questions?
I do have, I think, a question for staff. I wasn't quite, I wasn't quite done there, if we're allowed to go back, but if not, I, I don't have to, so.
You want to wait until, if it's a question for staff, do you want to wait till deliberation or?
Well, I would probably get this guy's question now.
Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, I can wait for you to come back up. And sorry, Mr. Paulus, this might be for you. I think that today, actually, there was a train that was stopped crossing over Maguire for some length of time, if I'm correct. I don't know how often that happens, but I have a concern about looking to place more development so close to the roadway when we have a lot of development that's already north of this, this roadway going east in the city that makes transportation difficult. Is this, has this been a consideration of staff or the developer, especially right here? And how often does that train block this roadway? Do we know? I mean, today, the train was like, just stopped on the roadway, not even moving, so.
Mr. Paulus?
Members of the council, Robert Paulus, city engineer, unfortunately, I don't have a good answer for you on that. I don't know how often the train comes to stop on that section or any particular section of track within the city of Post Falls. It does happen on occasion. Today, there happened, it happened to occur. Our biggest concern is that in seeing potential development on that site, the location of Yukon Avenue where it currently intersects Maguire Road is a unsafe distance from the railroad tracks.
Gotcha.
And that's, as Mr. Kimball mentioned and Post Falls Highway District has mentioned, we've been in discussions with the developer on some potential layouts and the goal is to try to move Yukon Avenue between three to four hundred feet north of the railroad tracks to allow for safe operations or safer operations. Looking at the collision history out there, there have not been any train-vehicle collisions in the last five years that I saw on state data.
And presumably, you would have no concern increasing the amount of population that uses this land to live in such close proximity to a crossing of the railroad that potentially has a train stopped on it?
I would not have a concern about that. We do provide alternate routes and numerous crossings throughout the city where we can get them.
Gotcha, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Stay there.
Oh, I was gonna say, I'm good, but...
Just quickly on, on the train crossing question, as that road has been identified as an arterial and we anticipate traffic to increase on that road, is it incumbent upon the city or upon the railroad to make improvements to traffic flow and controls on that intersection of the railroad and, and street? Or who, who does that fall on as traffic increases?
It would fall on the city. We have in our current transportation master plan, we've identified the rail cross, or we've identified almost all the rail crossings in the city of Post Falls for needed improvements as impact fee-related improvements that would occur. Historically, what the city was looking at was that the overall cost of widening the rail crossings to put on any one particular developer, whether it's a five-acre piece or a fifty-acre piece, is a huge cost. It can vary, but typically, if you have to put in lights and arms, you're looking at over a million dollars. If you have to widen the tracks, the planking is around one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars per linear foot. And then you have agreements to go through the railroad and the railroad is not cheap to work with. So it is something that, as those rail tracks need to be expanded, we, our history has been to put that as an impact fee-related cost and let all of growth pay for it through the transportation impact fees.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, and some of the impact fee collected from this particular, if this annexation is approved, would be designated toward, or?
Correct.
Toward the railroad crossing improvement?
That is correct.
Okay.
And we have improvements to that railroad crossing in particular that are on our transportation master plan?
I would like to go back and double-check that. I believe that we do, but I don't recall a hundred percent on that. I know that the planking there is just about the right width to handle the five lanes. Where we had some issues at that location was more handling the pedestrian facilities on the edges that might require a little bit of extension of the planking. And then that would become a multimodal impact cost, not a traffic impact cost.
Okay. But in order to do any of that, we would need the rights-of-way?
That is correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks. Anyone wishing to testify?
First of all, read is the piece of correspondence that came in after the deadline, per council's direction. "To the city of Post Falls, my name is McKenna Snyder and I am writing and supported the Maguire annexation and X-25-4. I was unable to attend this evening, but I appreciate the opportunity to submit my comments. I was raised here in North Idaho and after owning a home in Montana, my husband and I moved back because we wanted to build our future in the place I've always called home. We came back hoping to plant roots, buy a home again, be part of, of this community long-term. Instead, like many working families, we found ourselves in a position where we're renting and questioning whether homeownership here is something we'll ever be able to reach. We love this area, but the rapid and often disorganized growth has created challenges even for the dual-income households. Affordability, strained infrastructure, and inconsistent development patterns have made it hard for families like ours to feel secure about staying. That's why annexations like this matter to me personally. When development happens under city oversight rather than in fragmented pockets, it allows for thoughtful planning, adequate utilities, appropriate zoning, predictable infrastructure, and long-term vision. Annexing this area gives the city of Post Falls the ability to guide growth in a way that supports the people who live and work here, not just the development happening around them. In my role, working alongside local builders and trade businesses, I see every day how crucial coordinated growth is, not only for economic stability, but for ensuring families, for ensuring families have realistic, attainable housing options. Annexation helps ensure that new neighborhoods are built responsibly with the services, infrastructure, and planning needed to support a sustainable community. We want to stay here, we want to buy a home here again, and we want North Idaho to remain a place where people raised here can build a life without being priced out. Thank you for your time and for considering my comments. I respectfully support the approval of the Maguire annexation. Sincerely, McKenna Snyder."
In favor and wishing to speak, Wade Jaclyn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, thanks for hearing. My name is Wade Jaclyn, I currently live in Coeur d'Alene, but I am one of the applicants with Wild Horse Investments, my cousin Mike and I. I grew up in this area, my dad, my uncles grew up in this area, my grandfather, grandfathers. We are not coming in from out of state, trying to take advantage of any situations here. This is something that's really important to us as locals that grew up here, to keep our family and be able to raise our children here and our grandchildren. The first house I bought was just up the road on Henry, about thirty years ago. One of the things that Ray brought up that was really difficult to bring together was four individual properties that are contiguous to one another. We had a lot of issues putting that together. We were able to combine with the owners of the property that is on the southwest corner of Pole Line and Maguire that recently wasn't able to get annexed. And what we decided and worked with staff on is if we could combine four properties at the same time to create right-of-way improvements that weren't hodgepodge or jack-o'-lantern, jack-o'-lantern teeth, that it would show the good faith in what we're trying to do to improve the right-of-way of Maguire all at once. It improves the traffic control, or traffic problems of individual parcels getting development, developed at different times. It immediately improves the pedestrian traffic. During the P&amp;Z hearing, a young woman that lives just to the north brought that up where she actually drives behind her children while they're riding their bikes down Maguire to get to the elementary school. In addition, I don't remember if it had it on the spreadsheet or not, but there's power poles that are all up and down Maguire and along Pole Line that will also need to be moved in order for the right-of-way to be improved, so, which is another cost that would be incurred by us as developers, assuming this annexation meets your approval. It's hundreds of thousands of dollars. And along with that, we do improve the landscaping, the look, the aesthetics along that pedestrian trail, and also the fencing that would provide some delineation between the subdivision and the railroad tracks. Having Yukon moved to the north also improves the safety problem. We've been out there a bunch lately and that intersection's really rough to get out of the way it's currently lined up, not to mention the improvement of Yukon itself. The R2 single-family designation, speaking to the affordability thing, it's a misconception, I believe, that it's just first-time homebuyers that need this affordability. It's also people that have lived here and retired that are looking to stay here and want to realize that when they've sold their home, they can buy down and realize some equity, provide themselves a bit of a nest egg by selling their current home and buying something smaller while remaining in the area so they can be with their family. Again, this is a county island, in my opinion. The interior island that we try to work inside of, a lot of those properties are only two and a half acres, they're smaller, utilities are not right there, and to develop a smaller piece of property like that and drag utilities and improve the roadways ends up being cost prohibitive. Again, we're local, we're here for the long haul, this is not a one-and-done thing for us and it never has been. It's really important to us that we provide a legacy that our grandkids, our kids can look at it and say, hey, it has my name on that street and I'm proud of it. I appreciate your time and trust that you guys will see that this is a good annexation for the city. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Not wishing to speak in favor, Nicole Jaclyn, I am in support of this annexation. This project is well-thought-out and provides much-needed housing and contributes to the beautification of the city. I believe this is a positive addition to our community. Wishing to speak in favor, John Rudenbach, Rudba?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for your time. I want to speak in favor of this project.
A name for the record, please?
Oh, John Rudenba. I live in Post Falls on Brookie. I would want to speak in favor for this project for a couple of reasons. I have kids that have been through the school districts, I'm still in it, one's away at college, he's already talking about wanting to move back, and it does help affordability, having more doors. The more you have, the more affordable it is for younger generations, or I never thought about what Wade said, even people, fellow coworkers and stuff, they really can't afford to buy a house. It doesn't have to necessarily be your first house, but in general, it will help. I think it was, I was at the planning and zoning meeting, which I thought was pretty cool, it's the first time I've got a good look at this project. I think it's really neat they did come together to kind of help create a large chunk of that corridor. And, yeah. And with this, I'm in the construction industry, it obviously helps jobs, which also helps restaurants and so, so forth. So it definitely is good for the community. And I also think it is impressive that they're willing to do a restriction with seeking an R2 of making it more of a mantra-style neighborhood, I want some to home in there, very great community, and those are nice, nice-looking homes and neighborhoods. I think that's about it, everything else has pretty much been said to you guys a few times, I, I am in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Not wishing to speak, but in favor is Darden Dakota with an attachment, I'm sorry, Darren, Darren, sorry about that, Darren. My name is Darren Dakota, I'm a local resident and pro, resident property owner here in Post Falls and a fourth-generation member of the North Idaho community. I'm speaking today in support of this proposed community. I believe this project is important for the long-term health and sustainability of Post Falls. Growth is inevitable, but more importantly, it's needed. And right now, our community is facing a serious housing shortage. As a father of four, I worry about whether my kids will be able to afford to live here. I worry about whether they'll be able to find a place to rent, whether it's an apartment or a small house, and eventually whether they'll ever have an opportunity to buy a home in the town they grew up in. This project may be just one piece of the solution, but it's a necessary piece. My nineteen-year-old son is in his third year working in the plumbing trade. Young workers like him and others in our local trades would benefit directly from the jobs, contracting work, and economic activity this community brings. This isn't just about housing, it's about keeping our local workforce employed and rooted here. I believe the city council on our community should approach new development with the mindset of, does it meet our standards and does it support Post Falls citizens? If it does, we should find ways to make it work and not create barriers to responsible growth. It's also important to remember that the developer, not the city of Post Falls, is paying for the required improvements, roadwork, sidewalks, utilities, and road widening. These are investments that benefit the community without placing the cost on taxpayers. Increasing our housing inventory moves us closer to attainable and affordable housing. This helps our employees hire teachers, nurses, police officers, firefighters, tradespeople, everyone who keeps this community running, and it helps future generations who want to stay in Post Falls rather than being priced out of it. Finally, this project does not take away any property rights from those who oppose it, their land use remains their own choice. In closing, I support this community because I believe it strengthens Post Falls economically, socially, and for the generations who hope to build our future here. Thank you. Wishing to speak in favor, Jason Knox.
Thank you, my name is Jason Knox, Mayor Jacobson, members of the council, thank you for your time tonight. I wanted to come speak in favor of this annexation because I'm a member of that new generation that is staring down buying a first home. And I fear I won't be able to afford one to raise a family here. Housing affordability is increasingly out of reach for me and many other young people like me who wish to call Post Falls home for the long term. There was a fascinating report out of our very own University of Idaho by Professor Stephen Peterson, the College of Business and Economics, looking at the housing shortage in Cootney County from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-three. They found that over those years, lack of affordable housing costs Cootney County three thou, sorry, five thousand three hundred and forty jobs in the local economy, five hundred and thirty-five point six million dollars in gross regional product, four hundred and thirty-five point four mil- and thirty-five point four million dollars in local payroll, and twenty-eight million dollars lost in total taxes, and those numbers have only grown since then. If you've spent much time around small businesses in Post Falls, you'll know one of the major, one of the largest restrictions on them recruiting and retaining workforce is lack of affordable housing. They have no place to keep employees, and they're losing employees to places like Spokane Valley where wages are more competitive given the cost of housing. If we want to keep the small-town feel of North Idaho, we need to support our local small businesses, and there's no way to do that if they can't keep employees. And there's no way for them to keep employees without affordable housing. If we continue to limit the supply of affordable housing, it costs us jobs, hurts small businesses, and raises our cost of living even more. Ensuring projects like this get built is the only way to ensure the economic viability of Post Falls into the future, and that is why I encourage your approval of this annexation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. In favor wishing to speak Chris Meyer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Meyer. I'm a Coeur d'Alene resident. I'm here before you tonight to speak in favor of the annexation request, kind of wearing two hats. I'm here as a community member. I've spent over forty years of my life living in Cootney County, watching our community go through some pretty interesting changes as we've grown and developed and adapted to some of the new demand that we're seeing in our community. And in my day job, I work for a commercial real estate development firm. I'm not a home builder, but I work, build, and manage the buildings that house businesses in our community that provide the services that we all want and need here: restaurants, retail, healthcare, legal services, insurance. Those folks are my clients. So on a weekly basis, I'm in conversation with those business leaders, talking with them about the challenges mentioned by the previous testimonial, on an individual basis, how hard it is to recruit and retain talented employees in this housing market in our community. The rising costs of housing are really impeding job growth. In particular, a lot of our clientele are in the healthcare industry, and so it gets as far as having highly credentialed medical providers not able to relocate here from other markets because of the housing affordability issue. So we're losing the opportunity to provide benefits to these, to our community members. So this is a supply and demand economics problem. The demand is outstripping supply in our community, driving those prices up. Sadly, in many of our perspectives, there's no gate at the border anymore. The demand is coming whether we like it or not, and so after forty years of watching this, I don't blame people for wanting this piece of paradise that we all live in here. So if we can't address the demand side, how do we address the supply side as community leaders and visionaries? We have to take a measured and strategic approach to increasing housing supply in our community at a pace and scale that makes sense for our community context. So this change is happening. We have to turn and face it head-on, clear-eyed, which brings us to tonight's applicant. The Maguire annexation application, I believe, has a lot of merits to help solve this issue. It happens one bite at a time, and each one of these opportunities, we can't pass up. This aligns nicely with the Post Falls comp plan within the area of city impact, so it does provide an additional opportunity for housing development on the perimeter of the current community, helps fill in the gap of county ownership, which we all know how cumbersome that can be to administer. Does have good connectivity on the previously mentioned arterials of Pole Line and Maguire, including the dedication of right-of-way, so that growth pays for growth. By that dedication, it's enhancing the transportation infrastructure in the community. Utilities are available around the site, and to my personal perspective, the medium-density zoning requested by the applicant really makes some sense when you consider the activity on the arterials transitioning down to the periphery of the community, which is surrounded by lesser intense development in the remaining county pockets. More supply is really the only answer and the pathway out of our region's housing affordability crisis, and this is one way we can contribute to that solution here tonight. So would encourage you to vote in favor of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. In favor and not wishing to speak Jeremy Voller. And in favor wishing to speak Andrew Rogers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, my name is Andrew Rogers, resident of Post Falls here. Actually, I had a lot more to say until the presentation this evening, and some of the written letters were much more eloquent than what I have to say. At this time, I think I'd like to abstain from making too much more comment, other than I really encourage you guys to consider this, this application for annexation, and I think it does really serve the community well. So please consider that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No one wishing to speak who is neutral, correct? And the information that we received, council received after the deadline, this letter is in regards to the November twelfth, 2025 planning zoning meeting regarding the proposed annexation, file number NNX254, of the eighteen point eleven acres of land extending from the southwest corner of North Maguire Road at West Yukon Avenue to West Pole Line Avenue. The meeting gave the citizens the opportunity to be in favor or opposition to the annexation. Eight citizens were in favor, fifteen were against the annexation. Of the eight in favor, only six lived in Post Falls. The concerns I have are that this particular annexation, actually any annexation of the lands between West Yukon Avenue and Prairie Avenue are that. Number one, this annexation is not consistent with surrounding properties to the west, with no benefit to those existing residents. Number two, developers are in the process of land-locking farmlands. From Corbin to Maguire and Prairie to Yukon Avenue throw their request for leapfrog annexation, which is development that occurs in a discontinuous pattern, jumping over, over some areas in order to build further out. Number three, developers neglected to inform planning zoning of the second high-pressure natural gas pipeline that runs dead center across all northern Yukon, all the northern Yukon Avenue parcels from Corbin to Maguire. That pipeline is operated by the Williams Company, Northwest Pipeline Corporation, Salt Lake City, Utah. The Maguire meter station is located at 2100 North Corbin Road. Number four, locating rural subdivisions and residential properties next to operating farms creates a variety of problems for farmers: liability for trespassing children, safety hazards from increased traffic and people, crop or livestock losses due to trespassing neighbors and their pets. Currently, the area between Yukon Avenue and West Prairie contains horses, mules, cows, chickens, goats, and sheep. Number five, planning zoning must be in compliance with the county's comprehensive plan, which states it must avoid urban sprawl. Number six, planning zoning stated that Maguire slated to become five-lane road. This is completely unnecessary. It is also due to be disengaged from Highway 53 in the near future. Because of these concerns, I am requesting that you deny the annexation of said lands now and in the future. Thank you for attention to this matter. Sincerely, Cladine Blocker. Wishing to speak in opposition Patrick Graham.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Graham. I live on Yukon Avenue. So I'm in opposition of this, and the main reason why, well, let me back up here. All I've heard during the planning and zoning and tonight is that they're going to build affordable housing. Affordable housing. Nobody has given you a number of what that housing is going to cost to build, but I can tell you that building a house in Cootney County right now is average two hundred and fifty to three hundred dollars a square foot. So that, letting that sink in a minute, a thousand-square-foot home at two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we haven't even put any property underneath of it. They're willing to give you seven hundred thousand dollars that they're telling you how much they want this to happen, and, but who's going to pay for that? The people buying those lots. So where are we going? It's no longer affordable housing. That's my first thing. Changing the road on Yukon. I've lived over there for over fifteen years now. I've never had an issue. You're wanting to change the, the approach to move it down so that it's helping the neighborhood? It's not necessary. We have, all of us that have properties have used that road for, there's some of them on that, had lived over there longer than I have. So you brought up a great point that I was going to bring up about the fact that CCNRs passing an ordinance so that no corporations can buy the houses. If you want to do that, then you're going to start driving down prices in Post Falls and in surrounding areas that, but it's corporations that are buying all these properties and then renting them out. So there is no affordable housing. There is lots that you approved still south of us on Midway that haven't even been developed yet, and backing up a little bit on that whole project four years ago that that was all approved. Last year, they had that midway tore up, the road tore up, so the residents that live on the west side of that development couldn't even use the road to get to Maguire. So it took them over a year to get in utilities. How long's it going to take them on when they shut down Yukon and have one way in and one way out? So that is my, all I have at this time. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Harrington, council received correspondence that I just read into the record, and then the author wishes to speak. They've already testified, correct?
Yeah, push the button. They are here to testify, and they already submitted timely.
No, it was untimely. That was the one council asked to have read into the records, which we have done.
Sure.
But now, apparently, they're here wishing to speak, but I would assume that we've already heard the testimony.
Yeah, I, so generally, we do brief written testimony in lieu of oral testimony, so since the written testimony was read into the record.
Ms. Blocker, you okay with that?
Yeah.
You're over here? Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure. We, we did hear your comments, so I can't imagine a whole lot's changed from the council just receiving your letter. So we were going, we'll go with your written testimony. Thank you. Wishing to speak in opposition Tamara Dale.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Tamara Dale, and thank you so much for letting me speak this evening. I reside at 2722 West Pole Line Avenue, which is just a couple properties from this annex that we're talking about. We moved there twenty-five years ago. We've had horses. We currently have dairy goats, and we have chickens. We have a lot of livestock, and I raised all five of my children in the 4H program. We moved there for a reason. We wanted property, and we wanted animals. This proposal is four times bigger and twice as offensive as a Briner annex that was already denied, with even their engineer saying R1 made the most sense. I would ask this body, what changed? Why is this even being considered? There is no firehouse on this side of the tracks, and this morning, the train was parked across Maguire and Corbin, as you stated earlier, and possibly Pleasant View for who knows how long. Unless you can get all the Maguire frontage on both sides of the road, it doesn't mean anything to traffic flow. Just one holdout, and all the development is moot. We need a moratorium on any new development until the intersection of Maguire and Saltes is fixed. Are we going to tear down the church or wipe out the mini-storage to get two more lanes to accommodate any further development? The three-lane bottleneck at Saltes is even a bigger problem, which may require some version of eminent domain. This again contradicts the existing plan. This intersection, PL and MG, is slated as a possible business hub, and this would completely negate that plan. Based on the anticipated traffic flow and other intersections on both Pole Line and Maguire, we need a roundabout. The current proposal will actually make this intersection more dangerous for pedestrians, not less dangerous, because they will have to cross two streets to get to connecting sidewalks, actually, four if they're putting four in, than deal with the new traffic on Pole Line outlet. In the P&amp;Z report, they point out that the field across the street is not going to annex anytime in the foreseeable future. Safety, 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 and it's, we need sidewalks for children. Well, what about the children and grandchildren who like the rural lifestyle, who have livestock and want a safe place to continue that tradition? If they want this so bad, then they need to pay for the cost of fully widening Pole Line, both sides of Maguire and Yukon, also pay the current residents for the inconvenience and damage to their lifestyle. The fact that actual fairness to the neighbors, it is basically impossible to do that proves this is a bad idea. Not all low-income housing turned into ghettos, but all ghettos are inhabited by low income. We also have a constant stream of people from the local subdivisions walking down our streets, enjoying the rural atmosphere, with up to a hundred new cars per hour that will be no more. The development causes a direct risk to current residents, who most of have livestock on property and use the road for recreation, passage of animals. Most people moving into the area are not capable of proper navigation of livestock, especially horses with riders, and pose a direct safety with, to the area. Most new residents are not aware that Idaho is an open-range state, and the driver, not the animal owner, is responsible for any damage to animals or riders. This council has a duty to protect its residents' quality of life from overdevelopment and urban sprawl, and to vote for great. Thank you. And I am in opposition, so I would hope that you would vote that way.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Wishing to speak in opposition Gerald Dale.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Appreciate the time to talk to you. I'm, as my wife said, a twenty-five-year resident of Pole Line, directly in the impact zone of this annex proposal. I would like most of the people here, and I like most of the people here tonight, and most of the people in this town moved here for what it was, not what the unelected planners and develops, developers want it to be. I would like this council to consider multiple public opinion events that have occurred in the last few months, that are all trending the same direction with the actual local residents. The election last month for the mayor and city council for Post Falls, both, with both open seats going to the less-growth-oriented candidates, the fire levy budget override that failed because the people want controlled growth and the developers to pay their whole bill, not just the upfront part, and leave the long term for the rest of us. The Briner annex from earlier this year, where this council rejected a proposal for one of these same parcels at the R1 level, and I quote, "not in the best interest of the city." The new area of interest or area of influence process, where it looks like the city will have a little bit less influence over non-incorporated lands, and then specifically, the input gathered for the new comprehensive plan, which is in process, to replace the existing end-of-life comp plan. Things have changed in the last ten years. But especially the public surveys conducted by the SCI Alliance at the Post Falls days and online, with all three of those surveys showing this same trend, that yes, affordable housing is way up on the list, but proper planning, open space, and quality of life ranked higher by significant margins. When you look at all of these trends together, it appears to show the consensus of the opinion within the county and the city is that enough is enough with apartments and high-density development. Profit-driven model and some real estate and some real grassroots planning and preservation needs to happen. Code states that zoning must be in compliance with county comp plan, which states it must avoid urban sprawl. The staff report contradicts itself for what this should be zoned. They are okay with R2, but says the adjacent areas are R1 low-density. The previous version of this was rejected before, and now it comes back in four times the size. How is bigger better, except for the profit for developers? The only thing this annex gets you is more free sidewalk and more non-owner-occupied rentals. Nothing is free. Someone has to pay for it, and this time, it's the surrounding This is a unique area. And I'm paraphrasing previous things, but development of this area is going to be so piecemeal that normal, no formal plan can be made or implemented. Most of these five Most of these 5-acre parcels will not be available at any price until the current occupants die over the next 30 years, and then most of them are in trusts, so will be handed down. We long-term residents have nowhere to go. This is a great spot. We don't want to go anywhere else. We can't afford to go anywhere else. We moved here for what this unique area is and was, not for what someone else wants to turn it into. In conclusion, the city of Post Falls needs to reconsider their existing plan and make some larger parcels. Not everyone wants to live in an apartment. Development is not the enemy here. Greed is. And greed, not common sense, is the only reason R2 was proposed instead of R1 or R1S. Those densities would actually match up with this side of the tracks and keep, give people and families a chance to have a real garden, a lawn, a few chickens, maybe even a horse.
Sir, your time's up. Can you wrap it up for me, please?
Thank you. There is a demand for single-family homes with larger parcel size, a quarter-to-half acre or R1S. This would keep density at reasonable levels without destroying the rural feel of the area, and no area is better suited to this than this unique area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is Michael Valentine still here? He wanted to speak, but he said he could only stay till 6:30. He is in opposition. As an established North Idaho Post Falls resident since 1989, I've appreciated the rural living and safety of quality of life, been in the real estate business and trucking industry, and had the privilege of experiencing the dream in Idaho. This new proposed annex would make Idaho extreme inner-city loss of farms, nature, and potential crime. Wishing to speak in opposition, Michael Gardner.
Hello, I'm Michael Gardner. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. We support growth, but it must be fiscally sustainable and consistent with the city's own comprehensive plan. Under R2 zoning, this annexation would add nearly 150 homes compared to about 50 under R1S. That's triple the demand for roads, stormwater systems, utilities, and emergency services. The fire levy failure shows residents do not want to subsidize uncontrolled growth. The comprehensive plan calls for avoiding urban sprawl and ensuring zoning transitions are compatible with adjacent uses. R2 conflicts with surrounding R1 and R1S zones and undermines that principle. The proposal presents a sweet deal for the city with costs being covered by the developer. The reality is that it's not that simple. An analysis done by Urban3 found that cities tended to gain short-term tax revenue and infrastructure contributions, but inherited permanent maintenance liabilities that outpaced the revenue. They called it an economic sugar high. A fiscal impact study at Olympia found annexation added millions in net costs over 20 years, even with impact fees and developer-built infrastructure. Speaking of impact fees, Idaho law does not allow them to cover maintenance, operations, or existing deficiencies. Maintenance costs are forever, and they grow faster than tax revenue. R2 zoning accelerates this with higher resurfacing, snow removal, and stormwater maintenance costs. The Spokane Valley Rathrum Prairie aquifer is a sole-source aquifer serving over 500,000 people. It's highly permeable and unconfined, which means pollutants from stormwater runoff enter quickly and spread widely. Under current conditions, a one-inch rain produces about 73,000 gallons of runoff. Under R1S, that doubles to 147,000 gallons. Under R2, it triples to nearly 246,000 gallons. The proposal touts the environmental improvement of removing the septic systems that are currently installed. Removing the septic may eliminate 13.8 kilograms of nitrate per year, but R2 stormwater adds 37.2 kilograms of nitrate a year, nearly three times the amount. That's not an improvement. Moreover, R2 introduces 2.8 metric tons of sediment annually. Even R1S adds more nitrate than septic removal, but at 40% less runoff and pollutant load than R2. More impervious surfaces means more oils, fertilizers, and contaminants infiltrating the aquifer, not just for Post Falls, but for Spokane Valley and beyond. City water service may reduce pumping demand, but R2 zoning creates a much greater risk of aquifer contamination. R1S minimizes impervious surface area, reducing runoff and protecting water quality while still allowing growth. Our recommendation is to approve the annexation only if zoned R1S with minimum quarter-acre lots. This balances growth with fiscal responsibility and legal compliance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Wishing to speak in opposition, Tammy Dale.
I'm Tammy Dale. I've been a resident of Cootney County for 25 years. I grew up in the 4H program here and have been in this area, contributing to many activities for a very long time. The key major problems I see with this proposal are, if developed, this tract will greatly impact and increase the traffic on Yukon, especially Pole Line, absolutely destroying our ability to use the road and posing huge safety issues for livestock, recreation. I've been a triathlete and mountain biker in this area for some time. I ride down those roads all the time. There's many cyclists that ride down those roads all the time because of the rural environment. The surrounding areas currently and historically are rural ag and ranch properties, and developing these proposed parcels will greatly alter the current way of life for the existing residents. This development will cause property taxes to rise, thereby causing damage to the mostly long-term residents, especially those on fixed incomes. Half of all of the high-density development on the south side of the tracks is brought by, out by, bought by out-of-state investors, so the Affordable Housing plea is a scam to cover the greed. Quite frankly, if they end up at the same price point as the duplexes south of the track, they're already out of the affordable market. I know my employees and myself, as a small business owner here in Cootney County, already can't afford it. So it's not affordable. If they really cared, they would take the time to make it so that the bylaws by whatever HOA or any other legal remedies or protections would be so that they would have to be owner-occupied because, as someone who's currently having to rent in Cootney County, I can tell you, most of these properties are not owner-occupied. If approved, R2 will be just another subdivision that will have so many cars parked on the streets, you won't be able to pass. Two cars by each other as you're passing each other. Look at what's already happening in Montrose. It's a bigger subdivision, and you still can't hardly get passed by there. Quite frankly, the future growth really should include mid-level. As somebody who knows, current residents already living in the county that need to upsize into a larger house as their families grow, it's not there. They're having to leapfrog from all of this entry-level housing to much larger parcels. The R2 is not mid-level. The R2 is entry-level, and that's already what they're in. That's not what Cootney County needs right now. There's already been many people that have gone through the ecological damages. There's lots of small farmers in this area. We have one of the best local food markets, but that requires that there's still farmland here to farm. And quite frankly, the goal of any bureaucracy is to expand its scope. Constance and suggestion of local planners for R2 developments is proof that they're going from a bureaucratic mindset, not a community mindset. Thank you for your time and your consideration on this matter. I hope that you will use all this information to, to pause this project and give us time to redo the needs, the planning for Cootney County, so that it can meet the needs of current residents that want to contribute and continue to contribute to the atmosphere and the way of life that's already here.
Thank you. Wishing to speak in opposition, Jacob Sink.
So yeah, I'm Jacob Sink. So I live on West Yukon. So right off the bat, you know, that train was there more than an hour today. So can you imagine the disaster? You know, you've got density blocking two intersections. You've got to go all the way around. All the traffic routing through that, causing a traffic jam, multiple directions. Maybe there's an emergency, a fire, a medical event. And it's quite frequent. It slows a lot. It doesn't stop a lot, but it's not the first time it's stopped. There's also switching tracks there. So there's frequent, there's times where it'll even back up. So it's a very poor choice. As for the safety issues brought up, it's a non-issue. I live on West Yukon. There's no safety problem whatsoever in any dimension. There will be a safety problem if this is approved, the annexation, big time. Traffic will bring injuries, fatalities. All the dangers come with traffic and density. I want to say, I really appreciate what this council did with the Briner Annexation, to deny it. I do like what others have said that, you know, we can't stop growth. Growth can be good, but it needs to be done in the right way. Like, we're in this huge region. So there's massive demand from all over. There's also means there's tons of places to live and commute into Post Falls. So you're not going to solve housing. You're not large enough, no matter what you do. What you do have the power to do is to make a great place to live, to continue to ensure that Post Falls is a place that people are like, wow, this is amazing, the way it was developed. Don't let it just be, you know, just another run-of-the-mill place where, you know, stack everything 10 miles high, create a bunch of problems, and it, problems begat more. You know, I don't blame the sellers. They want to make a living, but you're the council for a reason. To make the right choices, not necessarily the ones in the interest of a minority. So I won't bring up the Briner part again. I do appreciate that. So, you know, if this is approved, I think it'll be where the tail starts to wag the dog. You'll lose control over growth. The buildup will justify more growth, and it'll just continue. And then finally, addressing affordability, I think I touched on that. You know, demand is national, or at least very region-wide. There's lots of people I know in Spokane that'd love to live here. They can't because it's unaffordable. The second the price drops, they're bidders. They move in. The locals who wanted the affordable housing, it's still unavailable to them. The only way is to build, basically, economic progress in terms of jobs and things, and to bring the skilled in. But the skilled are not going to want to live in those entry-level homes. They're going to want families and kids. So you're not going to bring those type of workers in. They're going to give you the most productivity, which can truly help you with your housing prices. So others have touched on a lot of the indirect costs. You know, I think this council is wise enough to understand all these things. You know, the city cannot and should not attempt to make housing affordable. What it can do, as I've said, is have the power to make the housing that does exist be the best place to live. You know, I've got four kids in my place. I'm concerned for their safety with the R2 and a lot of, you know, yeah, and other quality of life issues, obviously. Your leadership's why this is such a great place to live. And I can promise, you know, a lot of community members and myself have come together. Wise action here will not go unnoticed. You know, I would love an opportunity to support any and all campaigns of everyone who makes the right decisions here, and I believe that my neighbors all feel the same way. Therefore, I urge you to deny this annexation in favor of better alternatives, because there's many alternatives. You can have smart and smooth growth. This is just not one of those options. So, thank you.
Thank you. Wishing to speak in opposition, Rick Heinlein.
Thank you. My name's Richard Heinlein, and I live on West Pole Line, and I'm here in opposition. So you're going to hear the broken record tonight about the affordability issue for building these R2 residential homes, and I'm here to stand unequivocally opposed to this. Right? So we can be real here and say that building a high-density, which I will consider R2 high-density and for this given plot, that it's going to improve the affordability of houses due to supply for the demand. We all know, and because I've gone to a, I've learned supply and demand and read a book on ethics past eighth grade, that this doesn't do anything compared to world global markets and inflation. That's all this is going to really dictate. So when people are trying to tell you that a $550,000 single-home house, that's mere feet away from another one, is affordable and reasonable living, we're kidding ourselves when we do such. So this is really for the profits of the investors and not for the supply of demand. Demand is being generated here or dictated creatively. So, and for their other selling points, I'd like to squash a little bit of that, is the non-residents that write letters that come in and also stand up here, like Mr. Knox from Rathrum there. He is not from this town. He does not pay taxes here. So his testimony or whatever he said should be struck from the record, because it doesn't make sense. I'm not going to go to Beverly Hills and tell them that they should build more mansions, because the ones they have available aren't affordable enough. I would be laughed out of their court. So the irrelevance of that, I do want to make a case for. And furthermore, with these R2 developments and the loose wording of the planning by the applicant and their engineers, is that the private developers are just looking for profit in this form. So technically, with their loose wording, they can go in and build whatever they want and then fight a legal battle afterwards, because I've seen it done. I know how things are done. Which leads me to asking the elected officials here about the establishment, if we do not have one already, I'm not aware of it, a Rural Agricultural Preservation Committee for Post Falls. The areas that you're looking to approve here are all agricultural-zoned. They talked about the gas lines. We talked about the traffic in the roads, and it's going to be an issue in that way. So in my terms, I feel like this is necessary to, one, avoid collusion in an ethical matter, which I will cite the Local Land Use Planning Act of Idaho, which is the Idaho Code 67-6506, to ensure that developers and people that are not in collusion with sitting members of planning and zoning, may there be such things. So that's an important one here. We need to put pragmatic checks in place that will make this legal for us, and I think that's important. This committee, if we do not have it already, should oversee the preservation of legacy agricultural-zoned areas and determine the right places to build subdivisions, which we're already spoken about. The proposal that was shown here during a planning and zoning meeting, when they put it up on the board, the whole entire room audibly gasped at that. Right? So we should also take into account the local aesthetic of Post Falls, Idaho, the allure to Idaho coming in here. The high-density townhomes that were built on Midway and Maguire are horrendous-looking. It's near criminal about how those rectangles just stick up out of the earth. So we're trying to prevent that in our nice country area. So on top of that, fees for developers need to be increased so that we are not hit with decreased home values and increased taxes. Right? So we talked about the roads as much as we possibly can, but you get fire, emergency services. Emergency service is going to get past that train that was stuck there for an hour? That's to be determined. But I just want to make sure that people know that even law enforcement, the deficiencies here are grand. Being a former sworn police officer in the state of New York, I can see the deficiencies there. So we want to make sure that our taxes are not going to increase, and we look forward to doing something more like R1S that is a reasonable growth and not an irresponsible boom of growth. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you very much.
Wishing to speak in opposition, Ashley Tilton.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Ashley Tilton, and I live on Pole Line. I'm here tonight to strongly oppose the approval of Maguire Annex. This project continues to be advertised as affordable housing, but that claim doesn't reflect reality. These homes are tightly-packed, zero-lot-lined structures with no backyards, designed to maximize profit, not affordability. Throughout all the discussions, the term affordable housing keeps being repeated. But affordable to who? Affordable to someone moving here after selling a million-dollar home in California? Because the local families who were encouraged to speak here tonight, including the young man from Rathrum, would not be able to afford any of these homes. A new single-family home in Post Falls right now typically ranges from $700,000 to $1 million, depending on the builder, the lot size, and the interest rates. That's not affordable housing for the average worker, teacher, police officer, nurse, or young family trying to live in this area. I'm a military retiree, and I couldn't afford that home. So calling this project affordable housing is misleading, and repeating the phrase does not make it true. Second, the argument that this project will make the area not make it true. Second, the argument that this project will make the area safer because contractors will widen roads and add a sidewalk is simply inaccurate. The sidewalk they keep advertising won't even connect to existing sidewalk systems. So, having to cross back and forth over this five-lane road that they're going to build, so that you can connect to random sidewalks along Maguire, doesn't make it safe. If you want a sidewalk to be safe, then just build a sidewalk. You don't have to put in housing units to make a sidewalk. And widening roads means all the residents along Pole Line, going from two lanes to three lanes, are gonna lose part of their property. This hasn't been discussed, it wasn't in the plan. When are we gonna talk about this? Because I'm one of those residents that could potentially lose part of my property to widening this road. Under PFMC eighteen point twenty point one hundred, zoning and annexation decisions must be consistent with a comprehensive plan, and must not create an evident adverse impact on public services. This proposal fails both points. Traffic, emergency response times, road safety, storm weather capacity, and rural livability will all worsen, not improve. Our roads and emergency services were never designed to absorb a sudden surge of tightly-packed homes, and approving this project would overwhelm these systems far beyond their intended capacity. I also want to address the motivation behind this project because it matters. The developers and project managers are from this area, and while I respect that, it's disappointing that they do not live near the impacts of this build. Being local should mean caring about protecting our community, not squeezing in high-density, profit-driven developments in the area where intentionally set up as small farm plots and transitional country land. We moved here for space, agricultural use, for peace and rural character that is disappearing one annexation at a time. And finally, I have serious concerns about ethics and public trust. A board member involved in this project, even though they recuse themselves from the vote, is still unacceptable. When decision-makers also profit from the outcome, it undermines confidence in the entire process. This plan does not make Post Falls more affordable, no matter how many times it is repeated. It does not make it safer, it is not supported by its current residents, it only benefits the developers. Don't let developers distract you with the dollar signs claiming this project will spare the city expenses. Their profits come first, our community will pay the real price. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, not wishing to speak in opposition is Jenny Beck. My family moved here almost seventeen years ago to start our lives over after we lost everything in the two thousand eight economic crash. We chose Post Falls because it was slower pla- slower pace, rural with open fields and fresh air. We love to see open fields with horses and cows on our way to school or the grocery store. We were drawn to the safety that is, that this area provided, and the simple lifestyle we could have here. We raised our children here, we built our lives here, now it feels like this town is being sold off, one development at a time. That is not responsible growth. This is an increase in density without infrastructure, planning without accountability, and expansion without respect for the people already living here. Our school system is overburdened and strained without proper resources. Our roads are unsafe, emergency services are stretched thin, routine services haven't been efficient in quite some time. My commute this morning on unplowed roads is just one example. To make it worse, many of us uh most affected by this decision cannot even vote in your elections. We had to say, uh, we had no say in the mayoral election or the city council seat, yet here you are making decisions that will impact our quality of life. Count- county residents like us will carry the burden of the impact while developers walk away with the profit. Another piece of what makes Post Falls a wonderful place to live and raise a family will be gone. It is imperative that the city council deny this annexation as proposed. If development must proceed, it must be consistent with surrounding R1 and R1S parcels, not the R2 density being proposed, and it must include real infrastructure improvement plans, not empty promises. Stop doing first and planning later, it doesn't work. Our community is not a commodity to be sold to the highest bidder. Our quality of life shouldn't be for sale. I understand growth is inevitable, but there is no reason that common sense cannot be applied, keeping the growth consistent with the surrounding parcels. Not wishing to speak in opposition this is a little bit hard for me to read. Uh, True Hibbert Story Smith Trust. I was surprised by those of you who said you'd wanted younger, younger family members to be, to return and live on Rathrum Prairie. Well, prairie itself means open area, farmland, metals, all of which you would ruin. No more views, uh, no more animals, uh, kids to grow up with. They can, they can move to uh Santium Street, building new houses there. Don't argue for your children and grandchildren to be able to return to live on the prairie when you are getting rid of it. We, we moved here to be on the prairie, let us be. You are requiring, you are going to start ruining that for us, too. What you propose opens the door for the end of the prairie. Remember, you cannot change it back ever, think about it. Not wishing to speak in op- in opposition, Alan Horning. Uh, one, against R2 current area is extremely busy, wi- unable to handle additional traffic. Why are you planning to make Maguire five lanes when access to Highway fifty-three will be closed in twenty twenty-six permanently? They, they, this should be shifted to Pleasant View. Most of us moved here for the rural life, life. This move is bad, bad for the li- for that lifestyle. The three lanes proposed on Pole Line west of Maguire will cause problems going east of Maguire through the school zone. It does not appear the infrastructure is in place to support additional property, as we have lost our lost some, uh, lost our power multiple times in the last three months. Water pressure is also dra- dramatically uh reduced. Not wishing to speak in opposition, Dawn Lidle. Did I just pronounce that right? These lots have been uh past year, oh, have been um something once before and were denied. Statement was made earlier this year that the city would not expand its holdings just for the purpose of, of development. It appears to be, to me, that the city administration thinks there is an uh unburdened amount of, unlimited amount of water in the aquifer for personal reason. I picked my property because it was in the county uh rather than the city. Uh, not wishing to speak in op- in opposition, Rosanna Bracken. I am concerned about the safety of my neighborhood with high-density housing and related traffic. I also worry about my property value with rezoning and the increased traffic and road enlargements. Not wishing to speak in opposition, Micah Joseph Braken. I believe this mass housing in this area is unnecessary, as there are other areas owned for this purpose. I also believe the proposed road expansion in that area is unnecessary use, is an unnecessary use of money, as well as cause problems with property owners overall qualit- and overall quality of the area. Not wishing to speak in opposition, Mark and Kevin Kassen. Our concern is that homes costing three hundred thousand and more is not affordable housing, which means that the lower-priced homes that some may get financing for will most likely need to rent a room, which means more cars and traffic. The cars accumulated to the little neighborhood just built off Maguire and Midway have a ridiculous amount of cars on the roadway, causing more traffic in the area. Yukon is not built for a large traffic load, and Pole Line will be inundated with traffic as well. Uh, we saw the map, when we saw the map of the proposed neighborhood, it was heartbreaking. This should only be an R1S for a rural community. We are already being inundated with more housing development on the northwest corner of Midway and Maguire. We strongly oppo- oppose, we, we strongly oppose to this unsafe end proposal. Not wishing to speak in opposition, Adriel Bracken. I am very concerned with increase of high-density apartments in the area, along with concerns of infrastructure. I live on the corner of Roseland and Maguire, and am deeply afraid for the safety and value of my home with proposed widening of roads and increased traffic. I bought this house, this home twelve years ago, uh, no, we lived on, I bought this home twelve years ago, no, we lived on edge of county, and couldn't believe this growth would be allowed. Not wishing to speak in opposition, Dan Bechtold and Kathy Bechtold. My son-in-law is Dan Bechtold, but I'm sure you're not him, so. Uh, keep zoning R1, poor planning. Uh, interaction of Highway fifty-three and Maguire closing. Uh, no need to widen Maguire on the Pole Line. Area is an open range. Area is an open range. Traffic should be shifted to Pleasant View. Stop the urban sprawl, keep rural lifestyle. Loss of water pressure and power outages several times in the last three months. Paulette Cooper, not wishing to speak in opposition. Traffic's already getting bad, don't want road widened, and don't want my trees damaged. I like my privacy and quiet. Not wishing to speak in opposition, Rebecca Ronald. This area is not good place to have high-density zoning. This area has been and still is small farms and ranches, with many animals, and most places having some acreage. We are tired of this area being drastically changed from how it has been previously. More dangerous, more people have already found needles around train tracks, this was not something seen before. Tired of annexations being for developers, not for actual people that live here. What about gas line in this area? Not wishing to speak in opposition, Floyd Mossberg. Have you driven in Post Falls lately? Cars, cars, and more cars. We live here for the rural lifestyle. It's been pushed out, no more development, please. Not wishing to speak in opposition, Hannah Gardner. Today, this area generates about thirty-four trips per day under R1S that rises to four hundred and seventy-five trips. Under R2, it will skyrocket to one thousand four hundred and twenty-five trips, thirty-seven times the current condition, and three times R1S. Adjjoining streets lack sidewalks, and the Maguire-Seltice intersection is already failing. Adding this level of traffic before infrastructure improvement is unsafe and irresponsible. Until this, these infrastructure issues are resolved, higher-density zoning isn't just bad planning, it is dangerous. Not wishing to speak in opposition, John Glinsky. Did I get that right? I, I do not understand four lanes north of the tracks on Maguire. Who is going to pay for the railroad crossing to be expanded to four lanes? Fifty-three is closing. Traffic will divert to Pleasant View and Prairie. R2 does not make sense for this area. Cheryl Mossberg, not wishing to speak in opposition. Is Stone Church to be torn down? Exactly how many residents on eighteen acres? And not wishing to speak in, in opposition, Joe Gilliland. Yes, I am opposed, as I am a resident out there on Pole Line Avenue. Almost seems like a movie. The big money comes into town and the common sense goes out the window. Large country charm lots get bought up, and cookie cutter look-alike small lot homes are put in. We need to put the brakes on and preserve what little charm this town has left. That's all the folks who have submitted uh information or wish to testify. Now, it's time for rebuttal by the applicant.
Evening again, mayor and council. Ray Kimball for the record. I get it. Change is hard. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Post Falls. I spent five years down in Moscow, kind of, just during the school year, um, to get my degree, and I'm boomerang right back here. As a kid, I made ten cents a pipe moving irrigation pipes out on the prairie. Um, Montrose uh was the Sears Field, uh, and the Hundred and Eight, and the Kelly Field, and the Midfield, and Wirefield. Those were all ru- those were all owned by the Schneid Millers. I moved pipes on the Johnson Ground, I did a lot of things. I moved pipes where my house is now. Over the twenty-five years I've been doing this job, um, I've been involved in the development of probably five, six, seven thousand different lots um in this area. Court Lane, Hayden, Rathrum, Post Falls. And change is tough. Growth has happened, and is happening. It has been happening since the seventies or before. This area's been in a constant state of growth. Responsible growth is important. There are utilities, so we tried to grow on the edges and the outskirts, not taking huge swaths of land necessarily. We want to concentrate growth where the utilities are available, where, so, there's sewer right across the street, it's of adequate capacity and, and depth. Water's in the street, um, it's of adequate capacity uh and size. I think it's a sixteen-inch main out in, in Maguire, uh, which may not mean anything to you, but it's huge for water main size. Um, in the last twenty-five years I've been doing this job, and of those five, six, seven thousand lots, I don't think I've ever had a single project where it was bought up by an out-of-state Black Rock-type developer creating all rentals. Never happened. Not a, not even a twenty-loter, not a ten-loter, not, not a fifty-loter. Just doesn't happen. If there are rentals, they're typically bought up by a resident who has, wants to some local who wants investment income um for their future. Um, the vast majority, and I mean vast majority, of the properties that I've helped develop go to owner-occupied, single-family, homebuyers, families, people like me, people like most of you, people like a lot of the people in this room. With regards to the railroad, um, so that existing crossing right there right now is four lanes. So, it's a four-lane crossing, it's got the guardrails up, um, and it's, it's got the bus lane, right? So, with a five-lane road section, the five-lane road section is two lanes east direction, the center turn lane, and at railroad crossings, we don't need a center turn lane. So, it's pretty easy that we can do a, a road diet, if you will, at that location, slide everything into the middle, go four lanes, still have room for the pedestrian crossings with the existing uh tracking in that, in that area, and give us the flexibility at low cost, you know, give them a little bit of creative design, we can make that happen um as a community with minimal costs to the taxpayer. Um, when it comes down to, so, I think, was it two, three years ago that we got that the emergency services did their, implemented their um impact fees? Most people I know that own houses in Post Falls never paid an impact fee for emergency services. Every single home in Post Falls that's built from here on out pays an impact fee. That's an important thing to remember. Um, it does affect affordability, um, but it also offsets the impact on our emergency services with regards to that train track being there and train stopping every once in a while, or trains passing through. Um, whether this is annexed into the city or not, that doesn't change that fact. Um, it doesn't change really anything. Um, emergency services have been dealing with that since emergency services have been here. Um, and they will continue in the future to deal with that, and that's, and as evidenced by none of their comments, uh, as in zero comments with regards to concerns, uh, they have no concern with it. Got a lot of notes. With regards to the bottleneck at Maguire and Seltice, um, I think this project is probably a really good example of why, um, why it's important to annex properties that, that many storage is in the county. It was zone commercial in the county, it didn't annex into the city of Post Falls, city didn't get any right-of-way as part of that. And that's, in a lot of ways, that's kind of the penalty for not annexing on important corridors and important intersections. Um, Pole Line's one of those, and Pole Line and, and Maguire's one of those intersections. So, not only does the city get the, the right-of-way and the improvements built, but every single house in that subdivision will also pay, the follow-on subdivisions will also pay impact fees. So, it's that plus. So, they're more than mitigating their impact, um, and the benefit to the city is huge. Um, when it comes to affordability, we've got very, very few levers that we can pull as a city, as a community, when it comes to supply and demand. And one of the things we can do when on the development side is we can get a little creative and try to come up with something, products like the R2 detached, single-family that we are requesting, that offers just a slightly different product line that's not already out there. So they're smaller lots and with those smaller lots, they're typically smaller homes, pushes us into the entry-level market. I wish it was cheaper. I wish the costs were cheaper. I wish construction costs were cheaper. I wish land costs were cheaper. I wish fees were cheaper. I wish a lot of those things were cheaper to keep affordability down. There is a floor and we're doing everything we can to ensure that we are providing options for affordability. Now, not all my clients do that. I have lots of clients who do the upper-end stuff and the large lots and county development and whatnot. But the reality is, is that this is one of those places where we're talking about responsible growth in an area that is next to utilities, next to, you know, adjoining the city of Pulse Falls, right across the street. It's, it's not a hodgepodge development. It's different than what came before because with great, my clients with a lot of expense and a lot of difficulty got four, five-acre parcels cobbled together to come and present something.
Ray, time's up. Could you wrap it up for us, please?
And that completes.
Thanks, sir.
Rebuttal. Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Kimball, before we go to deliberation. Better close the public hearing. First question up before we have further discussion is, is the annexation of this property in the best interest of the city?
I'll jump in first. This is, this is always a difficult one, doing, doing big chunks like this. I think we've heard very good public comments on both sides of this. I was impressed, I think, by the level of insight that a lot of people put into this. So thank you, everyone, for showing up and expressing that. I think that's really important and it's, it's a difficult decision to weigh when we have longtime residents who are on both sides of the issue. And we're in a position where regardless of what we decide, we're going to have a lot of people who are angry at us, but that's kind of what we signed up for. And so we have to kind of weigh things, you know, the best that we can. There are some strategic reasons why doing an annexation here might make really good sense for us. The right-of-way is obviously one, that there are intersections that do need to be improved in our long-term plans. And if we don't annex and get the right-of-way in a time like this, then we probably end up having to later raise taxes and then use that to purchase right-of-way from the developers who own the properties. And, and so it's, it's a cost in some ways that we have to bear and planning for that adequately can make it cheaper by doing things now. There's also the pedestrian trails that have been mentioned. There's something that, that maybe a lot of people don't know is there's a Public Works Operations Center that we're building upon Hargrave to the north. And as part of that, we've committed to getting infrastructure out there at some time in the future. Because we're, the city spent money, we bought that lot, we're building the facility there and, and at some point, we're going to need water and sewer there, or sewer there. There's also a public school site to the north on the prairie that at some point, they're going to need to build that to expand capacity for our schools. And again, they're going to need to get infrastructure up there and you can't do anything like that unless there's sewer. And so using projects like this that help leapfrog utilities out there gives us some benefits in the strategic long-term plans, which we have to weigh in addition to all of the comments that come in. I think moving the intersection away from the railway is a good thing because there's only going to be more traffic in the future regardless of what we do tonight and having safe intersections is a really big deal. Having the, the pole line intersection on Maguire probably does need some improvements. We can't do anything about it until we get all four corners of that in city limits and we have the right-of-way to actually be able to legally go in and improve the intersection. And so we've got to, you know, weigh all this stuff and then also think about what are we doing with, with the housing supply? I know there's a whole generation of Americans who feel like they have no opportunity for homeownership and that's really difficult. When I see friends of mine who are having to leave the area who grew up here and they don't see any future for themselves on the ladder of American homeownership. And if you don't have some way to buy an entry-level home, you're not going to have a good long-term economic prospect as inflation continues if you don't get on the ladder somewhere. We just did a housing needs assessment and the big takeaway from that was we have almost no inventory for starter homes. That there's a lot of higher-value homes. The median home price in the county is five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Interest rates are absurdly high and for young Americans, they feel like they have no opportunity here. And that's not a good place to be in. I like that this is using single-family detached as a restriction. I think that's good. This is not apartments. It's overwhelmingly, nobody wants more apartments and our, we all agree with that, I think, and our needs assessment said that we have too many apartments. So, okay, we have too many apartments, but we don't want to stop building housing for, for young families or for retirees at the same time. And so we've got to balance that and say, if we're doing no apartments, let's do ownable starter homes. And I think that's what this is. And so I think this is, it's also a benefit that we're doing multiple parcels at once. I know it looks like a lot at once, but when you do it in a big chunk, it's still going to be developed over a long period of time. But this allows us to plan for the utilities and the roads when we do the subdivision later so that we can get them in the right spots. And I think that's important. Rather than doing the hodgepodge development where things go in places where they don't make sense, we can actually lay this out in a way that does make sense. If this were anything different, if this were doing multifamily, if this were doing apartments, I would be saying no. But based on the balance of all the things that I see and the factors that I consider, I think I'm going to be a yes on this one.
Let's go next.
I will. Councilman Westland summed it up, but the reality is yes, is annexation is in the best interest of the city based on land use map, comprehensive plan, which we always talk about, transitional, suitable for growth as far as the West Prairie focus group, medium-density land use, mixed residential, and again, the single-family detached is the right fit. When we do these and we have public comment and folks come up, we're looking for facts because that's what we have to base ours. We don't go by emotion. We certainly don't go by the developers, whether they're in-state, out-of-state, in-town, out-of-town, whether they're from Pulse Falls or Rathrum. It's not what we go by. We go by facts. We go by the data that's been presented to us. So that's what we look for. I've had cases in planning and zoning where folks have come up and said, hey, you might want to be aware of this that you're trying to annex in because there used to be an old landfill there. There's two tractors and a bunch of stuff buried. Great, good information to have. We need to look at this a little bit further. I do struggle a little bit when I hear terms like collusion, ethics violation, ghetto, things like that that are thrown out that it's just not applicable. So I go back again to the facts and the facts are, is that I do believe that this annex is in the best interest of the city. I do feel it's the right fit and I support it.
Nathan?
Yeah, I, first of all, just want to say thank you to all of you who are participating in this process. It's, it's very encouraging to have a room full so we get a lot of different voices and perspectives. If you'll indulge me for a moment, I'll get a little nostalgic about my history of, of living here in Pulse Falls. I am a Pulse Falls native, born and raised here. You know, when I was a kid, we can name all the annexation and development that has happened around, you know, Montrose wasn't there. That was a sledding hill. The Meadows wasn't there. Fieldstone wasn't there. Harmony Place wasn't there. Singing Hills wasn't there. We used to ride snowmobiles across that, that field out there. Idaho Street was a dirt road north of Pole Line when I was a kid because there was nothing out there. And so I get it. I, I feel that from all of you when you see the town and the place that you grew up in or have lived for a long period of time kind of erode away right before your eyes because I can definitely relate to all of that. However, the town that I lived in when I was a kid, being about seven thousand people, as difficult as it is to admit, doesn't exist anymore. It doesn't. And so we are faced with an issue of, I completely understand why people want to live here and why North Idaho is the hotspot for, for growth of people coming here from other states and other places because that's why we all live here. It's a beautiful place to live. And the small-town feel that, that I grew up with is something that I hope to preserve in some way as we try to manage the growth that is inevitably coming our way and that what we've witnessed in explosive fashion in the last six or seven years. So taking that all into consideration and looking into an annexation like this, I would have to disagree with Ryan. In my case, it is a little bit of an emotional attachment. I'll admit it to you. It's difficult to separate our emotions from what's happening right in front of our eyes to what the law says, what is fair to everyone and what is the right course of action. You know, I, I raised my kids here and, you know, one of the things that is paramount in my mind is, as in everyone's, the affordability of housing here is an issue. And as, as both of our other councilmen mentioned, you know, we know and we've, we've heard the message from our citizenry loud and clear that we don't want any more apartments built. And I can, I can proudly say that since I've been on, on council, we really haven't approved that many high-density housing projects since then. Many of the ones that you see continuing to build were approved before then. So we, we have heard you loud and clear about what you want in your community and how you want it shaped. Having said that though, then if we don't have an option for people to live in a, you know, rental type of, of housing product, what do we do? We can't have both at the same time. We can't have affordability and low-market supply. So there is, there is a rub there. How do we, how do we deal with that? And I think in looking at these annexations, I think if, if any of you listened to the previous city council meetings in the last year or so, you've probably heard me say this more than a dozen times. I don't, I don't believe in annexing anything into the city just for the sake of annexing and growing the footprint of the city of Pulse Falls. And so, you know, this is another one of those that, that comes up in this discussion because this exact piece of property that we're referencing included that five-acre annexation request that I myself voted against. So, you know, I'm definitely hearing your, your concerns about growing and specifically out in this part of the, part of the town that, that seems to be the most resistant to this point to higher-density housing than what we're used to in, in five-acre county-type Couple of questions I have before I kind of give you my decision on this particular annexation. I think they're valid questions that are brought up in a lot of these points, so if I could ask, we're talking about an affordable price point and I know it's really hard to kind of spitball this without putting a lot of numbers to it, but do we have a ballpark figure of what these homes would go to the market for in today's market conditions?
Mr. Harry, can we?
The public hearing is closed and so any type of, any of that information would require reopening the public hearing and going through.
But we can discuss it, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a number that I would like to know. And then the other part, someone mentioned there, you know, the number of parcels in this, in this particular plot of land. By my math, it's, it's, we're talking about five units per acre and it's a little over eighteen-acre piece, which means that much of that will be taken up by roads. So it's not even, you know, five times twenty would be a hundred, so it'd probably be around a seventy-five unit type of, type of development. And, you know, I think it's important to, to use accurate numbers and, you know, to really discuss what we're talking about. And the other one, and I don't mean to be stepping on anybody's toes or being offensive about this statement, a lot of what gets discussed when you talk about annexation and development is the greed of so-and-so, the greed of the property owner, the greed of the developer that comes in and sweeps in and they don't care about anything that happens to this property except for what lines their pockets. And first of all, I would challenge anyone in this room who has ownership of their property in the city to turn down any kind of fair and market value offer on your land if it comes to a point where you can't take care of it anymore because you're getting older. Many of the farms that we see around the prairie that surrounds us, I mean, historic families that have lived here for many years, the Schneid Millers, the Jacklins, the Myers, the McLeans, you know, that have generational farms and raise cattle on our prairie, many of them are now the ones who are selling pieces of that land off for development. So why is that? A lot of it is because the next generation along the line doesn't want to farm because there is no money in farming on the Rathrum Prairie anymore. The soil, I don't know if you can call it soil on the Rathrum Prairie, it's more like sifted rocks. You know, and I, I remember as a kid when we would, we'd go to football practice and the smoke from burning grass fields on the prairie, this was before we had any particulate count or anything like that, you know, our coach would just yell at us more to run harder. But as soon as the, as soon as the grass burning went away, I remember my dad saying that's, that's the end of agriculture in Rathrum Prairie because it made it not profitable to raise anything on that land anymore. So as a large tract landowner whose kids don't want to farm and can't farm because it's not profitable anymore, what do you do with your land? You subdivide and you sell it. The family heritage that you created when you, when you were building that small empire continues down your family line. And I think everyone in this room would agree that that's probably the most reasonable thing that you could do with that land. It's not a greed thing, it's preservation of your family and the work that you put into that land. And I'll kind of close the point by saying this. I think a more greedy thing to do is to put yourself in a position where you have control authority to make decisions over other people's land. Private property rights are a very strong attraction to the state of Idaho. These people that have sold this land to developers have every right to do that. It's not because of greed, it's not because they don't care about their neighbors, they're just at a point where something needs to change in their family and they, they are making the right decision for their family and I think we can all respect that. Now, coming to the end of it, I do think this is a, this is a proper use of the annexation for this particular spot and I think the biggest positive about this, what we've talked about, it is in accordance to the city's transportation master plan and obtaining those rights of way. Safety and, and traffic flow is very important and I know many of you in the room and some of the negative or the opposition comments would disagree with that, but that's why we have a master plan is that we look, we try to look into the future ten years and make a decision on what is going to be best for the city. If you look at the geographical location of Maguire Road North and South, it is pretty strategically placed for a north-south arterial and it really makes sense to have it developed as such. So I would be in favor of this annexation.
We're just going to go down the line.
Thank you.
And I don't get to vote. And it really doesn't matter because I'm almost done up here. So I'm not going to tell you my opinion of whether it should or should not be annexed, but I want to give you a little bit more additional information or insight. Councilman Ziegler stated that he used to sled down the Sears Hill, the Sears Farm. I bought part of that. When I bought that home in two thousand, our house was built in nineteen-hundred, okay? I've been here in six weeks, I will have lived in Pulse Fall, err, in North Idaho for seventy years. I've lived in Pulse Falls for forty-five years. We bought our house, built in nineteen-hundred, it was on the old Sears Ranch, used to be one of the largest dairy farms in Idaho. When we bought our home, it was, our neighbors to the west was a barn and two silos. That's all the neighborhood we had. Now Montrose is there. And yes, I would love to have, I'm surrounded by trees, so I've got privacy, but I would love to have that open space over there, but you know what? I don't own that property. I didn't own that property. I had an opportunity to buy a piece of it and I didn't. I cannot control what goes on over there. I can control what I do with my property. And one thing I do want to address, and we hear it, I've done this as an elected for twenty-seven years. And I would also like to echo the comments. Thank you all for showing up. This is one of the larger crowds we've had and I do appreciate you taking the time. But I have heard for twenty-seven years, when growth occurs, that our property values are going to go down. I've never seen it, folks. I've never seen it. And again, I look at what we pay for our property, I look at what the value of it is right now. I will assure you, the development of Montrose, which started in, I think was approved in nineteen-ninety-eight or two thousand and they're still phasing it out, has not caused my property value to go down. So again, I'm not going to tell you whether I think it should be annexed or not, but I want you to understand that when we sit up here, and I'm going to talk just about my position, I've been here forever. And people say we moved here because of the opportunity to buy this piece of property and to live this lifestyle we like. And I, I respect the heck out of that. But by the same token, since we're here, do we have the right to prevent anybody else from moving here to what they from moving here to what they see is a type of lifestyle that they like to see? So, again, I won't say yea or nay on the annexation, but I wanted to let you know from a long-timer, I do see both sides of it, but part of it, too, is I don't own the property, and I didn't own the property that is now my neighbor's, I couldn't control it. So, with that, I will shut up and go to you, sir.
Well, I'm super impressed with everyone's eloquent statements, and I'm wholly sympathetic to the people that came out tonight, and I appreciate your voices. And I've got, this has been a tough one for me, and yeah, I mean, you know, we can pretend that emotion doesn't count in anything, but it does, it matters. And so, I've got lists here of why I am against it and why I'm for it, and at the end of the day, in the interest of the majority of the people of Post Falls, I have to be in favor of this. I can't forego tying the continuity of the city together, the extension of services and utilities and things like that up Maguire, Maguire developing more into the arterial road that we've designated it to be. And yeah, we're not going to get this opportunity again if we turn it down, so it's going to be all on the city in the future if we want to do anything with continuity, so it's now or never.
Yes, Stig later.
Oh, dear. I don't ever go last, I always go first. This is different for me.
Surprise.
I know, I'm always the first one to say something, so, um, okay, well, turkeys, we're really just talking about the annexation right now and the question of whether the city desires it, whether I feel that this piece of property would be beneficial to be annexed into the city. We've talked about rights-of-way, we've talked about electricity lines and poles, we've talked about connectivity. I also have a list of things, and I probably won't be half as eloquent as everyone else. So, when I'm thinking about this, again, is it beneficial? So, I'm going to set that aside and speak to what was spoken to really fast, which of course, thank you all for coming out. I like enjoy speaking with all of our residents and the people that want to do stuff in Post Falls. I like to hear what you have to say and help represent that and make sure that you have all of the information that you need to live in the city as best I can. I do strongly believe that the landowners, whether it be one or 20, have the right to come and ask for annexation, and they have the right to ask for honestly whatever zoning they want. There'll be counsel by city staff about whether it meets the comp plan and about whether they think that it's something that council has an appetite for, but they, I mean, they have the right to ask for it, and if it goes through, they have the right to develop it, and I believe that very strongly. I like that they're local developers, I think that the heart of the project is in the right place, I think that the developers honestly want to do a good job, I don't think that, my reasoning for any of that is in question to those things. Before we move on to talk about other things, I would like to address a couple of comments that came up and that came over again and again, which is this idea of supply and demand. We've been building houses for, I don't know, seven years, eight years, with just increasing pace, and it hasn't seemed to decrease the price at all, so, I mean, I'm not an economics major, but it seems to me that perhaps it's slightly more complicated than simple supply and demand, so I sort of reject that as reason to build anything in the city of Post Falls. The idea that we have levers to pull, I also disagree with the assertion that the government should be pulling levers to make really anything happen, that should not be our role and what we should be, like, trying to do, the idea that growth pays for itself. Joe isn't here to bang on about this, this is his favorite thing. Growth doesn't pay for itself. As we know, growth pays for the upfront costs, growth does not pay for the maintenance of any of the proposed developments, this one or any of the other ones that we've seen. Affordable housing hasn't been defined, we don't know what it is. There are some other projects in Post Falls that are working through private-public partnerships to really address affordable housing, but just building smaller houses on smaller lots does not guarantee that they will be affordable. So, again, I don't appreciate that as reason to approve this annexation. We already approved two very large pieces of R2. I say "we" as I'm one of six, but if memory serves, I voted no on, I think, at least two of the three. One off of Spokane, that is a true infill, and then one just south of this one. So, when we talk about, is it to the benefit of the city and do we desire it, oh, well, I don't really know, because we have a bunch of R2 that hasn't been built out yet, so perhaps it would be reasonable for us to finish doing that, and then we can talk about this. I appreciate that it's difficult to get four contiguous pieces of property. If we're going to do it, that seems like the most reasonable way to do it, I don't know that that's enough reason to just do it right now. The idea that this is a county island, am I allowed to have a map up while I say this or no? Could I have?
We could bring up the map.
I'm so sorry.
Staff could bring up the map.
I owe you all a lot of cookies, thank you so much. I'd love to see a picture that shows this as a county island.
Are you talking about the, there's a photo from Ray's presentation?
Either one. I think you probably have one.
Let's see.
Oh, that one. Oh, I think, there it is. Okay. Um, so we say county island, like, whoop.
One moment.
Like, that big old piece of property on the left-hand side to the west is developed city, and it's quite frankly just not. We annexed it all in for what I think is a very specific purpose that you're welcome to delve into and look at, but it doesn't truly make this a peninsula or an island, and so, again, I reject that assertion that that would make this beneficial to the city. We have a central island, and we have another, a number of other pieces of property within the city that do need development, and while it be easy or hard, I guess maybe that's the challenge that I would put to local developers. I'm sorry that it's not easy to develop those pieces of property, but that's where the most benefit to the city presently, those who live here, would be. So, I just, I don't think that this is, that this is a county island, which I think is goal one, five or seven, that we talk about all of the time. This isn't going to solve housing, even if building more housing solved affordable housing, building these wasn't going to solve it. I think that that is most of what I have to say about this. We, I mean, the fire levy failed, the school asked for a levy, oh, that's demonstrable. I'll say that at the next, at that point, sorry. So, I am not in favor of this annexation as I do not feel that it would currently, I'm going to have two more sentences, and I'm so sorry, currently beneficial to the city. I will say, I don't know that it won't be at some point, but I don't think that the presentation as such makes it beneficial enough to annex to the city right now.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
So, we got four to one, correct?
Yeah.
I'd probably still call for a vote, just...
Roll call, please, Shannon.
Any motion?
We need a motion.
We need a motion for that, or just?
Yes.
Okay.
I move to approve Maguire Annexation ANNX 25-4 and have staff prepare final ordinance for annexation.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Westlin?
Hi.
Stig later?
No.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we go to the next item on the agenda, and I'm going to turn that over to you, Mr. Harrington. Our next, not next item on the agenda, but rather the next criteria.
All right, so now with the vote on annexation, we now move to consideration of the zoning of the property. Is the proposed zoning district consistent with the future land use map and focus area contained in the currently adopted Post Falls comprehensive plan?
Yes, because R2 is an implementing zone of the transitional land use designation, and also because despite saying R2, this is a low-density development using single-family restriction only, which makes it compatible with the surrounding single-family.
Anybody else?
What do you mean by it has a single-family restriction? You mean detached housing?
Detached single-family was in the annexation agreement.
Just, I mean, detached, but they're still smaller than, like, single-family R1. Sorry, I just want to confirm.
Anybody else?
I think that's a critical point, though, that it is consistent with the surrounding area only because of the restriction of detached, single-family, which is probably the best usage of the R2 zone designation.
Yeah, I would agree. I would also maybe in the future, or we could, from this point forward, continue to use the term entry level, because I agree with everyone, there is no such thing as affordable housing right now.
Maybe attainable.
Obtainable housing, however we want to word it, because if you do the quick math, I mean, you're looking at sub-450, $450,000 homes being considered that? That's not the case, but I do agree that it is the right fit.
I do think that there's, I do think that there's a case to be made that we, that this should be zoned commercial. If we're going to keep calling those two roads arterial, then I actually feel like maybe a light commercial would be more appropriate for this piece of property. I think it's hard to hold both arguments in the same, for the same decision, that's an arterial intersection, but we want R2, single-family detached housing, so, anyway, that would be my only comment.
I'm sorry. Mr. Plue, can I add anything, or are you?
No.
You guys are doing great.
Next.
Is the proposed zoning district consistent with the goals and policies contained in the currently adopted Post Falls comprehensive plan that are relevant to the area under consideration?
I think the point that I would make is something that we've talked about already is providing a diverse housing product in the area, and I know affordability is relative, everyone has their own definition of it. I think these homes will probably be in the 400 range, 350, 400, which for most of us here is going to be still unaffordable, but in contrast to an R1 or an R1S, which we're looking more like 700 and 750, it is more affordable, so I think that kind of underscores the point of diverse housing product available to our citizens.
And I think it helps with, but no, under no circumstance solves, but helps with the future housing needs Post Falls.
I think that we already annexed in two large R2 properties, so it doesn't actually help with the diversity of housing, and as to the goal that has to do with the financial and fiscal health of Post Falls long-term, I'd love to see jobs that could buy houses developed in the city, not just more houses, that we argue about whether or not are affordable.
So, if there's no housing for people to get the job, why would they want the job?
But there is housing, we already...
That isn't affordable to the people who are seeking employment here.
Right, but if this property is affordable, then the other two annexations that we already did earlier this year with the same restrictions on the development agreement for larger pieces of property that haven't even been developed yet...
So, the previous R2 annexation that we approved satisfies the labor demand for people who can afford those houses in this area?
The previous two that we, well, three technically.
Right, so how many units?
Well, I think there's 90 alone in the one off of Spokane.
So, 90 people are going to solve the labor crunch that we have because of housing affordability.
Well, surely another 70 houses is not going to solve the housing problem.
Right, but again, it's an incremental gain. We're not going to come in and approve 5,000 R2 homes at one time to satisfy the labor market, but we can do what, the best we can with what is presented with us, to us at the time.
But we haven't brought in any industry, like...
Multicare and Cootney are building a brand-new facility out on Prairie and 41. They're going to need employee people to work there.
Cootney Health, a couple of years ago, had, I think, several hundred, maybe even 600 openings. Northrop Specialty Hospital, I talked to them, they need people. One of the reasons they can't get people is because the housing isn't available, so...
I just don't think that it's that simple, and I would like to see more industry brought in, and that piece of property isn't going to pay any taxes either, so...
But I don't think it would be easier just to say, if we can't help with the problem, it doesn't solve the problem, then we're good, we'll just stop.
Not easier for you, but...
We can debate it, but we had differences of opinion, and that's fine, that's good, that's healthy, but I think we've addressed the, we've got one that would vote no on, or just a dissenting vote on the second criteria, and I think the others tended to agree, so I think we've addressed that need, and we can move on to the last criteria.
Does the proposed zoning district create a demonstrable adverse impact upon the delivery of services by any political subdivision providing public services within the city?
They were all given the opportunity to comment, and none of them said no.
Am I going to get in trouble if I bring up what I have brought up on the other annexations?
No, do try.
No, okay, great. The fire, like, Cootney County Fire and Rescue did not respond that they have anything to say, but they asked for more money because they say that they are not able to adequately provide services to what we already have, so I'm not saying that they can't provide services.
Isn't the impact fees, though, from this, part of that go to emergency services?
Yes, but not for any operational, like, fees, they can only do, they can't fix any deficiencies and they can't pay any wages with it, so they can only build more. So, I'm not saying that they can't provide services, I'm just saying it gives me doubt about the answer.
You know, we have polled the school district on every issue, I think, since I've been involved, and we used to get responses from the school district that said, "It is our job to educate children regardless of how many are here." And I have met with the different superintendents over the years, and I said, "If it's going to have a demonstrable impact on your ability to teach, please let us know." And now we get the situation from the school district where they will usually typically provide us the capacity of their schools, enrollment of the schools, and how much capacity they have available to provide education to the new houses being built. That's what we can do. We cannot sit back and solicit input from the different entities, fire, highway district, school district, pipeline, et cetera. We cannot sit back and solicit comment from them, and when they give us their answer, say, "Yeah, but we don't agree with you." That's, "I agree with you." They did pass, go out for a levy, but it's up to them to tell us, and I think that's what they have done by saying that they're not opposed to it. I don't think it's incumbent on us to try to interpret or decipher that in any other fashion, but that's just me. So, that, address the third. So, now it would be time for a motion, correct, Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
I move to zone Maguire Annexation ANNX-25-4 in the requested zoning of R2 with single-family detached restriction, finding that the zoning meets the approval criteria in the Post Falls Municipal Code as outlined in our deliberation and direct staff to prepare a reasoned decision.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Westlin?
Aye.
Stig later?
No.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Folks, we're like two fifths or two eighths, maybe a quarter of the way through the agenda. Should we take a quick five?
Yes.
We're going to recess for five minutes. We're going to recess for five minutes. Call the meeting back to order.
Right, for sure. Yeah. I talk to myself a lot, though, actually.
Uh, next item on the agenda tonight is unfinished business returning ordinances and resolutions. First is the fiscal year twenty six budget amendment number one, continued deliberation.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I brought this back from the public hearing we had last time. We wanted to talk about what these items were, and I had split them out in two sections. The sections are, um, the first section is going to be the items that we have purchased in two thousand twenty five that we want to bring back and re-budget for twenty twenty six. And the second section is the items that we talked about during the budget, uh, budget discussion, that the, we had salary savings, that it, we had about roughly eight hundred, seven hundred, eight hundred thousand. We had pulled some items off of the, uh, the, what, what people had submitted for requests. We thought we could fund those during twenty twenty five. That became a discussion for a lot longer than we had planned, so we decided to put that into a budget request for twenty twenty six as well. So instead of having them co-mingle together, I had them identified, but we brought them back. So now I have two separate lists, so we can identify which, which is which. So we can go through those and we can talk about them. I can operate it here. Okay, like I had said, we can go through these. We have, everybody has probably read these pretty, pretty thoroughly. The first ones for bringing forward from twenty twenty five that we, um, have on order, but we haven't received yet are fleet trucks, five hundred thousand, Fleet Sander, thirty thousand, a, um, equipment related to Camellan Trail, nine, ninety nine hundred. Special events ordered a Christmas tree, and I, did you notice that there was a flyer that explained the Christmas tree this time? It was not just your run-of-the-mill, it was a pretty grandiose Christmas tree that they could use at the special events for many, many years to come. So it's, um, that should have been in the first one, but, um, it's there now.
And this is, that, that specifically is coming out of a special events fund?
Right. Um, we put into special events, there, two dollars for every, uh, regi, class registration that people do for recreation. We, we set aside in a different fund for special events, and so that's the money that they use to purchase that tree with. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Um, and then for, uh, street impact fees, there'd be two hundred and twenty two thousand for the, um, the Prairie Trail Extension from Highway forty one to Zoro's Road. Again, the street impact fees from Third Avenue to Second Avenue for the, um, cycle track on Ross, Ross Point Road for a hundred forty six thousand. The Parks Department's looking to, um, complete the Camellan Park well replacement for fifty two thousand. The Parks Department had ordered, uh, vehicles in twenty twenty five, but we haven't received them yet, for a hundred thirty, thirty four thousand. They had planned to repave the parking lot out the Parks Department on Third Avenue. That hasn't been done yet, and so we want to carry that forward over, for, that's going to be seven hundred thousand dollars. Again, that'll be coming out of the facility reserve fund. Uh, let's see, we have, uh, a project from the Black, Black Bay Boardwalk from park impact fee. That's going to be three hundred and eighty thousand. They did get a grant for that, so we are just, um, using the money and get reimbursed from the grant. The Street Department has to, remaining funds for streetlight repair that they didn't use in twenty twenty five. They want to carry the remainder of those funds over to twenty twenty six. So that's at the tune of sixty thousand dollars. And also, um, the same thing holds true for, we have set some money aside for ADA projects in twenty twenty five that we didn't spend. And so we want, would like to carry those funds forward in twenty twenty six so we can complete some projects once they're identified in twenty twenty six. And that's going to be forty thousand. And the Water Capital Fund's requesting to, uh, do a water master plan for two hundred and fifty thousand. And so those total altogether that we, I'm requesting to carry forward is two point six million.
Any questions, Jason?
Okay.
Do you want to motion on these individually, Phil? I, I would think it makes sense because they asked.
Was the ordinance still to, there's, we don't.
There'd be instructions, yeah, in next meeting.
No, I don't need a motion on each one.
But I'm, I'm just thinking they requested that it be separated for consideration, so it might make sense to go ahead and do a.
That works as well.
Okay. Let's do it, let's do it in two motions.
Do you want this one to be called the carryover? Is that what?
Totally fine, however you want to do it.
Um, okay. I would move to approve fiscal year twenty six budget amendment carryover as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Stig Litter?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Westlin?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next up.
Okay. These are the items that we talked about during the twenty twenty six budget that we got a little, um, there was some confusion with. There was some discussion that there was money that it really wasn't. What this money was really, it was salary savings that we identified during the year from unfilled positions. What happened was, we, we usually look at salary savings then at the time when we submit budget requests. We try to cherry pick items off of the unmet needs list at the beginning of the budget season to say, okay, we have some very small items on here. What could we fund in the current year without taking them forward to the next year with, with the money that we're currently having the budget from un, unmet, from, from money that we currently have? So what we did was, we looked at the, what, what I did was, I looked at the budget, and I said, okay, we have roughly about seven, eight hundred thousand dollars that we could, from salary savings, we could identify some smaller items on the twenty twenty six budget request, and we could fund those. So what happened was, we went around the room with department request, and we decided what we're going to fund, and we're going to bring those back to ca, to council for a budget request. Well, there was some discussion during the election process that it was something that it wasn't, and that wasn't the case. The case was, it was salary saving. It wasn't an overpayment of whatever the process was. It was just salary savings from unfilled positions. It was one-time money that we won't have again just because we weren't able to fill positions. That was all it was. So these, this, what we had looked to identify were, um, a twenty four thousand crash attenuator for the Street Department, two hundred thousand dollars to identify because, uh, insurance didn't pay for the full amount at the, um, the destruction at the Chase Restrooms when they had the fire. The Police Department was looking at, um, they were doing some replacement for some body and car cameras in the next couple of years, and then they needed four hundred and sixteen thousand. So we thought if we could do half of the money saved this year and half of next year, we'd have the money in a couple of years to fully refund those and have it set aside for when the money was needed. We would have the full cost of that amount, then we could just purchase those outright.
Where would the two hundred next year come from if this is a one-time salary savings?
We would re, we would re-budget it next year to hope, when we could just budget it at the two hundred and eight thousand.
Gotcha.
That was the intent.
Okay.
We'd set that money aside in a reserve for the, half of it, and then hope next year, this year when we plan for twenty twenty seven, we would have that money at two hundred and eight, we'd set that aside. Knowing going into it, we all agreed that we'd set that aside for the PD.
So something else wouldn't.
So that would come back as another rollover then for twenty seven?
Um, or hopefully we could just budget it right out, depending on.
Okay.
Depending.
Got it.
But we all had an agreement that we would put it in a priority to, to fund that two hundred and eight thousand for the PD. Um, Recreation wanted to have a new copier for eighty eight hundred. Um, the sixty five thousand to rekey the Parks Department for additional security. Uh, the Parks Department was asking for additional survey equipment for nine thousand. Uh, the Facilities wanted to do a condition assessment for city-owned, um, buildings, and then devise an implementation based on their suggestions for thirty five thousand.
Is that within the timeframe that we would ordinarily do that? We have a facilities plan from a number of years ago, correct, that identifies these needs?
I don't know if we've ever done one of these before.
Oh. Okay.
We have not.
Yeah. Uh, John Beecham, Public Works Director, this, the naming of them is really confusing, and I'm sorry about that. We have a facilities needs assessment is what the consultant called that. That has been, that was completed in twenty twenty one, and that looks at space elements of facilities, what we need for, um, for expansions or remodels, that sort of thing. This would be looking at the nuts and bolts of the buildings and telling us, this HVAC unit probably should be replaced in three years. The carpet in your building should be replaced in seven, and then put together a holistic financial plan of all those maintenance needs. We do not have anything that serves that need currently.
Okay, great. Sorry, the names are, are they not?
They are very confusing, and I'm sorry, there's not better words to describe those two things. Thank you.
Maybe they just need very long titles.
What facility, John's wish list would be good.
Yeah, currently what we're doing is we're setting aside roughly a hundred thousand dollars for each, for City Hall and PD, for any kind of maintenance items, and we're assuming that roughly that that's not going to be enough if something major happens. So John was wanting to do one of these assessments and then budget accordingly based on years.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay. And then, um, the Streets Reconstruction had an additional thirty two thousand that, um, went unspent, so we wanted to carry those monies forward. Uh, let's see here. Streets, uh, Street had some street ceiling funds to, for thirty, thirty thousand for, um, want to be carried forth for next fiscal year. Uh, Streets requested for an asphalt hot box of eighty five thousand. And also the Facilities Division requested a, um, to add, this is a tongue twister here, uh, energy efficient tinting for City Hall, and that's roughly six thousand dollars. And then the total request for this is seven hundred and three thousand.
And how much of that savings is that? Is that like to the cent?
No.
No?
Mm-mm. No, the initial push was roughly eight hundred thousand, but when we went through the, the first put for this, it was seven hundred.
Okay.
Any questions?
A question about, um, funding for employment positions that were vacant. How is that budgeted money a one-time, why is, why does it need to be spent in that year and not a carryover?
It doesn't need to be. What we could, what we do is, we, if we have capital items that we are needing, other departments need because we, we can't fund them, we will usually look at unfilled positions that we have, and we will fund those through one-time purchases, um, whether it's through salary savings or a capital project, um, there's savings from there or another one-time neat, one-time savings we generally look at, if that answers your question.
So if I understand this correctly, then, um, instead of rolling out, because I'm assuming that those positions are still vacant, so they're, those are going to be.
They're filled now.
They're filled now.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a sa, it's, it's a budgeted amount, again, for this year that. I don't know, I don't know how to.
That'll be spent.
Yeah. You spent money that was allocated for one purpose on something else, knowing that in the next budget year, it would be budgeted for that, for that.
Right.
Recurring expense.
And then what we do, what we do normally is, if the position, like say for, we used, um, uh, we use salary savings to, to fund unmet, um, capital unmet needs for one-time purchases. What we generally do is, at the end of the year, I'll go through and see, okay, we have, let's say, five hundred thousand dollars. That's generally what I've been using for to fund, uh, vehicle replacement and also facility reserve. So I do a fifty fifty split. So that's what I was using to, to build those reserves up, because at first we didn't have a, a plan on how to fund facility reserves or also vehicle replacements. So that's what I was doing. And so that's kind of our methodology now is, but that was kind of a one-off, because we had so many unfilled positions. At the PD, they had unfilled positions, but they were kind of absorbing it through overtime. So, but we had others like Streets, and we had some all throughout the general fund. So that's what I was using was, okay, we had roughly that amount, so, but we had some other items that we may not be able to fund in twenty twenty six, so we could probably pull some of those off of twenty twenty six and fund them in twenty twenty five, because we knew twenty twenty six was going to be a hard year.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
It was a hard.
And I just want to clarify one thing. When he says he was allocating out those funds, that is authorized under a resolution adopted by the council. So the council had authorized those allocation of funds to the facility and to the replacement.
Yeah, and I remember that part. I just was trying to.
Yeah. Yeah, we, then later we brought that back to council to, to make it.
Make that.
Official, yeah.
Re-designation of.
Yeah.
So this truly wasn't approved at the.
Yeah, well, it, it's approved now, but yeah, that was how we came about funding our, that's how it all got started, yeah.
Any other questions, Jason?
So can I just call this budget amendment number one?
Or two, or whatever, or two.
Or two?
Two.
Okay. Move to approve fiscal year twenty six budget amendment number two as presented.
Second.
Motion second, but I have a question. Agenda says budget amendment number one. Agenda says budget amendment number one.
It is number one with, yeah, one B would be good.
Okay, one B, okay, perfect. Okay. Second, all right?
Subset.
Second, still stand?
Yes.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Stig Leder?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Westland?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Thanks, uh, Jason.
Thank you.
Next up is water reclamation facility contract amendment with Panhandle Area Council.
I think Jason's title is just as long as mine. Always throws me off finding the presentations. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Andrew Arbeany, uh, projects division manager. I'm going to lead off with a positive project update. So the general contractor has, uh, met the requirements for substantial completion, uh, meeting this milestone. Provide some finality to other project-related contracts, uh, that the city is managing, such as the PAC contract. So a brief recap, uh, the improvements are in operation, they are completed, we've been operating the system, all of the systems, uh, more or less as designed. Uh, so recently, we resolved or completed, uh, two of the remaining items that were required for contract substantial completion. Uh, that was the Wigan final report, um, acceptance report for the membrane system, and then Mr. Beecham presented the warranty, um, the proposed warranty and the service contract with Wigan Water at the previous council meeting. Uh, this creates a path forward for final completion, and I'll expand on that in my next step slides towards the end. Uh, recap of PAC's responsibilities for this project. Uh, this, the tertiary upgrades were partially funded with a loan from the state revolving fund. That required prevailing wages be paid, um, on the project, that was the responsibility of the contractor to do that. The city contracted with PAC to ensure that, as a requirement under the loan, and to ensure that that requirement was actually being met. That those services are required through substantial completion of the project. So with amendment ten, uh, this adds, uh, one thousand eight hundred dollars. And this is the amount that PAC will need to complete the closeout of the wage compliance documentation. Uh, so previous amendments were for ongoing services. Uh, this is estimated for, uh, the remaining services needed to provide a deliverable to the city. It's expected that PAC would have, uh, their portion closed out by the end of December, the end of this year. One other note, this is a hourly, not to exceed, so it is possible that the actual build amount, uh, could be less than what is authorized in this amendment. Uh, talking next steps, so, uh, as we work to final completion, we have a handful of contract items to be resolved with the general contractor. Mostly centered around, around time. We have two, um, two claims for additional time. And then that also ties into our discussion about, um, the contractual financial remedy for any delays. Um, so we are haggling over the finality of that, uh, consideration in any delays when we're talking the great damages. So that takes into account our contracts such as JUB and PAC, um, it is typically a stipulated amount in that contract. So that is, uh, what we see as next steps in, um, getting to a final completion of the project. With that, I will?
Questions for Andrew. Entertained a motion.
Move to approve water reclamation facility contract amendment with Panhandle Area Council.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Westland?
Aye.
Stig Leder?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up, we do have an ordinance, Warren Field.
I move to place ordinance Warren Field Park Vacation VAC dash two four dash two on its first and only reading by title only under the suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Davis?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Westland?
Aye.
Stig Leder?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Motion passes, Ms. Trankin.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, providing for the vacation of approximately point three one acres of right-of-way running through Warren Field Park for an unnamed alley lying within block forty-two of the platte of Post Falls. Also including that portion lying between the west line of block forty-two and the center line of vacated Grant Street. Providing for the disposition of the right-of-way, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date, and providing for other matters properly relating thereto. I move to approve the ordinance Warren Field Park Vacation VAC two four dash two, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Davis?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Westland?
Aye.
Stig Leder?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is the painted rock annexation.
I move to place the ordinance painted rock annexation ANNX dash two five dash three on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Plou?
Aye.
Westland?
Aye.
Stig Leder?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Motion passes, Ms. Trankin.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, annexing property consisting of approximately four point six seven acres, located at two five 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 West Midway Avenue, providing for amendment of the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof. I move to approve the ordinance painted rock annexation ANNX dash two five dash three, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Plou?
Aye.
Westland?
Aye.
Stig Leder?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up is the linger annexation.
I move to place the ordinance linger annexation ordinance ANNX dash two four dash one one on its first and only reading by title only while under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Roll call.
Westland?
Aye.
Stig Leder?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Motion passes.
An ordinance of the city of Post Falls Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, annexing property consisting of approximately nine, I'm sorry, four point nine seven acres, located at two six seven one West Midway Avenue, providing for an amendment of the official zoning map and providing for an effective date hereof. I move to approve the ordinance linger annexation ordinance ANNX dash two four dash one one, and to direct the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Westland?
Aye.
Stig Leder?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plou?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up, uh, tonight we have new, uh, is, is new business, and we have none, followed by citizens' issues. In this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address council regarding city-related issues that are not on the agenda.
Everybody left.
We have, we have one.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, no one's rushing down, so I'm assuming that's, like, no, there are no takers. Next up are the administrative staff reports. First is the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six snow operation plan presentation. We've had our first complaint already, right?
Actually, we didn't. We didn't have a complaint today.
We had one, one snow time and, yeah, anyway. You guys do a great job.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, Ross Junkin, Maintenance Manager for Public Works. We did get our first snow of the year. Um, everything went pretty well. I will, uh, give you a little bit of an update of, uh, what we have going this year. We've got a little bit of a change, um, that we're gonna implement this year. We, uh, hope to have a little bit more efficiencies with it, um, and I'll go through that. So I'll go through staffing, our equipment, a little bit about last year, um, the changes we are going to implement, some challenges, and, um, how we, uh, handle outreach, and, uh, and I'll take your questions at the end, but feel free to ask questions as we go. We have twenty, uh, plow operators, that includes three of our leads, um, who oversee the teams that are out there. Um, we operate day and night, so we have a day shift and a night shift, so my night shift is on, on duty right now. So they're, they're ready to go. I'm sure they're out there checking the roads, looking for icy spots, treating it with magnesium chloride and making sure we're safe. Um, I have a department specialist, she, uh, Rhonda is her name, and she takes care of phones, emails, complaints, um, anything and everything we ask her, she's great. Uh, a street supervisor, and he oversees pretty much all of the, the leads that we have in streets and the operators that are out there. Uh, myself as a manager, um, three fleet mechanics, however, I only have one currently filled. Uh, we lost, lost one, uh, about a month ago. Um, he was a, a young man right out of college. Uh, was with us for about three months, maybe four, uh, took a better job elsewhere, a little bit more money. So, yeah, we're down to one fleet mechanic for the entire fleet of over four hundred vehicles and equipment. So we're struggling a little bit there. Um, and one supervisor who oversees all that. Our equipment consists of ten, uh, dump trucks outfitted with plows, um, as well as sanders that go into those as, and de-icers that go into the back of those plows, or the, sorry, the dump trucks. Average age for our dump trucks five years ago was two thousand and three, that was average, so we had some that were older, a little bit newer than that. We've gotten to a point where we feel comfortable, uh, just about comfortable with everything we've got, but, so we're at an average age of twenty, twenty, so about a five-year-old age now. And we have the five de-icer units and five sanders. We also have the eight city loaders, um, that all have gated plows. And we are, um, looking forward to getting those on the road and being more efficient with how we use those. Looking to last winter, uh, we only had four plow, plowable events, and we only got into residentials once. When we don't, when we have a lot of events which are small events, which are not really plowing, we end up using more materials, which consist of salt and magnesium chloride. So those costs go up when there's less plowing, if that makes sense. We still throw salt, still throw the magnesium chloride, but we rely on it more for the lesser, um, snow totals. Um, so you can see what we did last year, sixty-three thousand gallons, it's just over a gallon or a dollar a gallon is what it costs us. And the ice slicer, which is the salt that we purchased locally, um, and we have seven hundred tons stockpiled. Seems like a lot, but when you see it stacked up there, it's like, huh, that's for the entire city? I hope it lasts. Uh, we also, um, coordinate with the highway district, the local highway district, and they buy from us that salt, so we're stockpiling it there and they use it for, and pay us for it as they use it. Changes for this year, um, previous years, we've gone with four zones. This year, we're moving to five. Um, the reason for the change is a couple-fold, um, primarily because we are fully staffed in streets with our plow operators. We couldn't do this if we didn't have all of our operators running. Each zone gets two operators. So it's a plow, uh, jump, dump truck driver and a loader. But there's a night shift as well, so if you do the num, do the math, you need everybody here. So if we lose some staff during the winter event or the, the winter, we may have to revert back to a four zone. But we're gonna start with this and, and see, uh, track how we, how much more efficient we can be getting through, especially through the zones, the main, uh, residential zones. Challenges that we have are the planning that goes into this. My, my staff, my guys took a lot of time, um, working out these new zones and figuring out all these different routes, cause everything changed, and now all the operators have to learn new routes. So it's really, a lot goes into it anytime you make a little change to winter operations. Staffing, we're great so far, we have a full staff, that's, uh, keep our fingers crossed there. Plow gates, they take extra time. So, um, we, we emphasize that when we get calls, that it does take longer, because we're using plow gates, trying to minimize the burms that each resident receives, but it will take longer to get to you. Um, and then we go through how we operate. We do have some outreach, I'll talk about that and list the other priority, priorities go. Other challenges are mailboxes. We get a lot of calls about mailboxes. And hoops and vehicles and trees. Mailboxes in particular, because of the way that the, the plow gate operates, um, it can only carry snow, especially wet snow, so far before it has to release it. It's just too much, you can't push it as well. A lot of times the mailboxes are on the far end of driveways. It has to be released at some point, and sometimes it's released in front of a mailbox and people are not happy about that. We do our best, but we can't please everybody. The other, um, I'll talk about basketball hoops. It's been about three or four years ago, we implemented a program where we went out and, um, tried to identify people who had basketball hoops hung out over the road, cause that's an, um, a problem for our plows, loaders, dump trucks, they'll hit them, will damage their equipment, they'll damage ours, we're trying to help each other. So we've gone out and, uh, reached out to all these residents who have them. When we first started, we had over two hundred basketball hoops, um, at residents that we asked to get back on their property or at least out of our way. We get a maj, most of them to do that, some complaining, but most people are willing to do that. This year, we're down to under a hundred that we identified, so we'll have to take a route out and take a look and talk to people, but seems like people are getting the picture that, that, uh, that's a benefit for both of us. Last one is roundabouts. Roundabouts take, uh, longer to plow. If you can imagine going through a signalized intersection, you've got a, a gang of plows pushing through it, turn around, come back the other way, you're pretty much done. A roundabout, you have to take each leg and zigzag all the way around them. It takes quite a bit longer to plow it. Um, these are a couple, uh, there's two slides here, um, how we go through our outreach. Um, we'll post this on our, uh, social media, and it talks to people about, um, what they can do and what to expect, um, during winter operations. And these, uh, these will be put out. They haven't been put out yet, they will be shortly. Here's another one, um, it talks about, and even goes through the codes and what to look for. This is a program that we did last year, um, Paint a Plow. Um, since we didn't get as much, as many plowing events, the, um, the artwork is still there. So, uh, we didn't need to, oops, we didn't need to, uh, go back and redo it, so we're gonna run with it again. So, uh, get up.
That's awesome.
Get to see their, their artwork out there, uh, one more year at least. So in closing, um, we continue to, to get experience. I think we have four new plow operators this year that haven't plowed before, so we're practicing. We had a, a snow, um, rodeo, it's a training event where they, we set up a whole event with plows and they get timed, and, um, that was pretty fun training, uh, just recently, so, um, they take pride in what we do. We operate within our snow plan, and, um, and that's posted on our website for everybody to see. We, we send people there and, uh, and we take, uh, take all the calls, uh, correspondence that we get really seriously, so we jump on it. If, if there's anything we can do, we'll do it, and, uh, we care about the people that drive on our streets. Contact information, so that number there, um, is for Rhonda, uh, our department specialist, she'll take that, um, during the days. There'll be messages there for in the morning, and she'll deal with them then, um, and then there's always the, uh, snow issues email that, uh, we'll, we'll get. So with that, I'll take any questions that you might have.
I'd just like to say thank you. Yeah, I, I remember when we looked at snowgates twelve years ago, fifteen years ago, and were told they were not feasible, they didn't work, et cetera, so uh, we've come light years, and, uh, I think that's all for the betterment of our, our residents and, and, uh, you know, people wanna complain, you mow too ear, you mow, you plow too early, you plow too late. Your folks are out there at times of night and day that I don't wanna be out there, so I, I just really appreciate the effort and the time that you guys put in.
Yeah, they sacrifice quite a bit, as they, uh, work out overnight and through the holidays and, and all of that, so kudos to those guys. Lastly, I'll say, uh, if anybody would like a plow ride, you're more than welcome, just give me a call, shoot me an email, and, uh, we'll figure out a time where you can hop on a plow and, and, uh, see what it's like.
I highly recommend it, it was a lot of fun.
All right.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, I can't hardly wait, and I'm just gonna say, if you're gonna talk about duck regulations tonight, I would suggest that, like, the second meeting in January, you bring back for reconsideration the requirement to license cats.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I just got three kittens today.
Did you get them licensed yet?
We had people?
They're microchips.
Leash lots, and it was unbelievable, so, but wait till January, please.
Okay, I will, no problem. Uh, Bob Seal, Community Development Director, um, Mayor and Council. At the last meetings, Councilor Stig Leder brought up the co, comment that? At the last meetings, Councilor Stig Leder brought up the co- comment that, uh, we had previously heard at a planning and zoning meeting, uh, a request from a citizen to consider modifying the duck regu- regulations in the city. Currently, we do allow for ducks, uh, up to ten ducks, uh, but you have to have about an acre of land. Um, as you know, a lot of the properties within the city are not an acre. So we were requested to consider them more like chickens. Uh, planning staff, uh, did hear that comment at that meeting and has been poking around with different regulations and, and looking to see what is out there concerning ducks. Um, when you do find regulations, they often do, uh, start with that acre minimum for livestock, and that's usually what they fall under. I know in previous towns I've worked for, we did have regulations and yes, it started at an acre. That being said, I do think that there could potentially be room within a small parcel to house a handful of ducks, uh, in a similar manner that you would house chickens. Granted, they have-
A gaggle?
A gaggle of ducks. Or is that geese?
I don't know.
I think it's, I know it's geese. What is ducks? Flock?
A bunch.
A bunch of ducks. And I do, and I did listen to, um, the, the residents' comments as well, and it did kinda fall in line with stuff that we have seen and read that, you know, while we would allow for ten ducks on a pro, or sorry, ten chickens on a property in the city, maybe we should look at a lower number, five or six. That is currently an arbitrary guesstimate. But I would, yeah, if the council wants us to, we will continue to look into the regulations that other cities have created and come up with a, uh, a route that would work for the city of Post Falls, and that would also likely include kind of a number. Here tonight, just kinda looking for further directions. Should we continue doing some research? And bring back to you, uh, at a later date, currently tentatively scheduled for May.
Question I, yeah, that's fine, do it in May. Uh, question, question I have is, are ducks the other white meat? Like chicken or what?
Aren't they more brown?
Okay, they're dark. Thought I'd ask.
And, uh, just, just for the record, a group of ducks is a waddling if they're on land and a paddling if they are swimming.
What? That tracks.
Also known as a raft.
A raft?
Raft is also listed on here, a group of ducks swimming together.
Trivia night.
I say, uh, pursue it a little bit more.
I agree. Can I ask that, depending on what you guys think, maybe we don't just look at other cities and what they've done, but we ask like some, like a zoologist or like a duck expert?
Well, I will note that the city, a farm town that I worked in, uh, previously, they did do in-depth research as to the habitability for animals on parcels. And I will note that they did start at that one acre, but, um, so there are a lot of things to consider. And I do believe that yes, honestly, going, you know, having some conversations like that, uh, are absolutely necessary and often lead us to a similar conclusion.
Okay.
The reason we look at other cities is a lot of other cities have gone through the same efforts.
We need a duck per acre ratio.
Sure.
Was the duck per acre ratio, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just, you know, if you approve him, uh, Mr. Davis may have to tolerate my ducks being he's off the corner of my back property there, so.
Well, and as they noted, they are a little bit messier, but they are funny. I had a couple at one point in time, unfortunately.
So you have an-
They didn't survive.
Ordinance with foul language then? Ba-da-boom.
It's getting late.
It's the end of the night.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
One more point on that is while, while we're looking at ducks, I wouldn't mind taking a second look at the number of hens, because we're capped at ten hens right now. I have fewer than ten hens, so we had a couple, a couple deaths, but our, um, the, the coop that I have on our, our property could hold at least fifteen, and it seems a shame to leave some of it empty when it doesn't make much of a difference if there's ten hens or fifteen hens, it's kind of the same.
That's what you say. Your neighbors may think differently.
Sounds like a public hearing.
No, yeah, we'll, we'll take a look and see what's out there as well as kinda talk to, um, potential zoologists.
Yeah, I don't-
Duck doctors.
Duck doctors.
What's a duck expert? I don't know.
Yeah, no, hey.
Thank you.
Don't disagree. Thank you, guys.
Mayor and Council comments? No, not for me tonight. It's been a long day. How about Council? We do need an executive session to last no longer than, can we do it in fifteen?
I move to enter into executive session pursuant Idaho Code seven-four dash two-zero-six-F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated but immediately likely to be litigated.
Second.
Further, that no action would speak in during the session and that the session will last approximately fifteen minutes.
Second.
Motion second further discussion. Roll call, please.
Stig Leder?
Aye.
Ziegler?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Westling?
Aye.
Motion passes, we'll enter executive. Motion passes. We'll enter executive. Are there any motions to come forward?
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.